Coming tonight, East Dundee's board meeting dated March 20th, 23 at 5:30. Catherine, will you take the role?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Kuncy.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sodder.
Here.
And President Lino.
Here. If you rise with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That'll take us to public comment. Comment in. Is there anybody?
I am Maurice Martin.
I'm sorry.
Maurice Martin.
Maurice Martin, okay.
We emailed your presentation to the board, so they have it.
You don't want it? I'm Maurice Martin, and I'm from Portland, Fort Maxwell, New York, East Dundee. And I wanted the opportunity to comment tonight again about the gypsy moth infestation that has been facing the village and the proposal that's for you later on this evening. There have been some discussions, I believe, with open space in the area and natural resources type people, and I realize that that perspective is going to be different than my perspective, a resident who lives in the neighborhood where the trees are. And I think they're probably, from a natural resources perspective, is probably never a good time to apply an insecticide, right? Because we want to preserve and everything. But the infestation is right on, exactly on the border of the open space. And I believe there's been some discussion about perhaps a 300-foot buffer to the outside of the open space where the spray would not occur. And I realize that hasn't been agreed to, but from my perspective, if the buffer was 300 feet into the open space, it would give the residents a lot more protection because in the presentation you see there are households with infested trees that are right on the border. Also, for those, I can't show you the picture, but there is a picture of a tree on Lincoln Avenue, which is nowhere near where the traps were placed. And it's a very infested tree and has a lot of gypsy moths on it. So if we have that tree at Lincoln, can we also infer that those gypsy moths have jumped the fence that I included a picture of at Greenwood and also Lake Shore Drive? So I just would ask you again to stay in course and understand that from a resident's perspective. And I also did a lot of reading. Sometimes other villages have done this in combination with a forest preserve district or something nearby, and forest preserve districts are sprayed. It's become a necessity. It's not unheard of. Hart Bridge was an example where the forest preserve district did need to spray, but then Hart Bridge sprayed within the village themselves. Compton Hills that I mentioned last week, by the end of this month, will decide what they're going to do in 2023. So they sprayed in 2022. They've done the trap counts and everything again. They're going to decide what their process is. And also, when I spoke before, I really only talked about the BTK solution, and that's an early spring solution before the caterpillars have hatched, when the trees have leafed out. There are other aerial solutions that are less harmful. It involves a pheromone, and it confuses the male. They don't know where the females are. They think they're everywhere, so the males and the females don't mate. That's a later solution, but it's been described, it's for more widespread areas where the infestation is not so thick. So it's a way to calm things down over a gray area. It's not a way to put a bucket of water on a fire that's burning, and I think that's what we have today. Thank you very much.
Erin Thrower and Katie Meyer. Don't do township.
Good evening. My name is Erin Thrower, and I'm the Dundee Township Supervisor. I live in West Dundee, but we work at East Dundee, and we manage about 1,000 acres of open space. So tonight, we're here to tell you, we've talked to a few trustees and with our friends at the forest preserve and also Public Worksville, about our concerns about why we're not going to move forward right now with spraying our areas and also about some other solutions that we think might be good ideas. So I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Programs and Administration, Katie Meyer. She's also a naturalist for our open space area, so thank you.
Hello. Heck house tonight. Just want to say happy spring, everybody. It starts officially Tuesday or Wednesday. How are we looking at it? So, we have a property called Library Springs. It's 50 acres, and we were approached by the village, would we want to be part of this? So I'm here to say why we're not going to do this, and I'm here to educate, and I'm not here to try to talk anybody into doing anything. You have your own yards, you have your own opinions, so I just want to say that's not why I'm here. For Illinois, the state of Illinois, with IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, there are three types of protection for public land, and one of those is land and water reserve, one is nature preserve, and the other's nature preserve buffer. Library Springs has land and water reserve protection, and this is why the state has said they will not allow BTK contact property. They do not allow it on any of the properties in Illinois that have land and water reserve, nature preserve, and nature preserve buffer status without a special permit. And I was at a nature preserves meeting where they were discussing, should they do BTK at Star Park? And this was maybe five years ago, because they had gotten so bad there. They had to have a very lengthy, in-depth discussion if they were going to do this or not, because those lands are there to protect the wildlife, and BTK is safe for humans. It's safe for all animals except lepidoptera. And if you don't know what lepidoptera is, that's the butterfly and moth species family. So that will, can kill all of them in that small caterpillar stage. So it's not just gypsy moths in the woods, and it's not just monarchs, which we tend to think of, thank goodness, because if that will be a danger, we protect them for the long haul. But there's many species of butterflies and moths living in the woods, so when we, when you go to do this, if you get the product of them at that stage alive, it will kill them. And in case you don't know, spring is here, and baby birds will be hatching, and what do baby birds need to eat? They need to eat bugs. And what's their favorite bug to eat? Well, it's caterpillars, because it's like a sausage. It's fatty, juicy meat, it's a lot of food in one little thing. So not only are we protecting the butterflies and moths, but we're protecting the animals that depend on them.
Can I ask you one thing?
Sure.
There's people that have permission to go spray chemicals everywhere? Is that what you're saying?
Well.
They're trying to protect things, so.
I'm sorry.
What are you protecting all the animals from?
We won't allow BTK on our property. What's BTK?
We're going to have this conversation.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
The floor is hers at the moment, so it's not really a discussion at this moment.
The village will be discussing about how they want to aerial spray BTK in the East Dundee neighborhood.
It's a chemical, right?
Well, it's not a chemical, but it's a concoction that will kill the caterpillars.
It's a natural occurring bacteria.
A natural occurring bacteria. They eat it in their stomach and they die. So now, the IDNR said you can't do it within these boundaries or a 300-foot buffer past the boundary. I get it. Some of you are backed up right to Library Springs, and maybe this is what you want. I get it. How can the state stop you from getting within that 300-foot buffer? We, the township, can't, so I don't know how that, you know, goes about. But I did include the IDNR in our email conversations that Phil and I had, and Erica was included on those two, so they know what's going on here. They recommended this product called Splats that will not affect any other type of butterfly or moth species. Phil said state ag never even told him about that product, but then he went and checked with them, and they said, oh, you can't use it, but I don't know why, when the state of Illinois said, tell East Dundee to look into this. So I don't, I don't know about that. Did you plurget comments from Gary Swick to give to the board for today's?
I sent those.
He emailed us.
Okay, so you have those, so I don't need to read those. But Gary Swick has been very involved with the community. He recommends to not do this, and he has his reasons why, so the board has that. There's another entomologist in this area who recommends that we do not do this, that, like the state of New York has only done it for commercial purposes, like maple tree farms. And then there's a gentleman named Doug Talamie, who's a famous entomologist. He has a few books out on ecology and why nature is important to humans, and he's given many talks, and he does not recommend this at this time. And I'll just quickly say what he had to say. Spongey moths do not emerge early, but many other species, particularly geometric inchworms that fuel bird migration are early season as well. Spongey moth populations respond to weather conditions as much as anything. Wet springs trigger a fungus that controls them very well. Problems come when you have several dry springs in a row. So if you get some good rains, just before bud break in April, I would hold off on spring. The ecological cost of spring is very high. Ecological meaning plants and animals that depend on each other for survival. I don't get the sense that your population will be high enough this year to seriously harm your oaks, because it would take a few years of hits, of defoliation, before the health of the oak tree or whatever tree starts to decline. So, you know, we're here, Library Springs is here to be protected for nature, and we'll continue to do that. Everybody has their own opinions. I think you remember a time when we were little, and there were many, many butterflies flying about, and we hardly see them anymore. And I think you also remember a time when we had many fireflies, and we were kids catching them, and now you hardly ever see them. But I'm sure a lot of people have grub killer in their yard, and that kills fireflies. So thank you for your time, and I wish you the best, because I know this isn't an easy thing to discuss and think about. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Catherine, anyone else? Do you have a question?
Hello. My name is Leigh Chairs. I'm here with seniors from Gardner Place Senior Living Community. We're here because we recently heard that board voted to allow the Elgin Mall flea market to come into the River Valley Shopping Center. And I wrote my points out, so I will read them to you, but before that, I want to say we did take a petition, because we wanted to know, to get an idea, how many people really didn't want this. And we have a petition here that I will give to you with 104 names. These are people from the Gardner Place Senior Community and the houses that are right behind us on River Haven, who are very close to the shopping center. So here are some of the reasons why we are against this decision. Okay, we simply feel, first of all, that the Board of Trustees gave us no consideration at all about the concerns that we would have as next-door neighbors to the type of business you want to add to the River Valley Square Shopping Center. I ask you, would your parents or grandparents want to live amid a lot of chaos in their senior years? We have no problem with the vendors, but we are concerned for our safety with the increased traffic, the noise, and the increased need for parking spaces that will occur when the business attracts a huge amount of people they claim to attract. In talking to people who have either lived in the Elgin Mall area or have shopped there, we get the same comments from all of them, that people who live there have to move because of known robberies and vandalism. The shoppers said they didn't feel safe, especially in the outdoor areas. We are seniors. We're in our 70s, 80s, and 90s in that building, in that area. These are supposed to be our golden years, so they say. Well, you just blew that right out the window for us. A lot of us drive ourselves wherever we want to go. We have our driver's license, and we move. Our concern is all the traffic we will have to deal with to get in and out of our parking lot. In order to turn left, to go north on 25, we have to exit through the main entrance in the mall parking lot. On weekends, it's always a bigger problem because of the heavy traffic. And now, the incoming vendors have said they attract about 1,000-plus shoppers in a weekend. Add that to what we already deal with, and the police will certainly be busy with accidents. The seniors in our building, who have windows facing the mall and its parking lot, are worried about the noise that they will have to listen to from cars and people, especially in spring and summer, when their windows are open for fresh air. And also, in reviewing the special 16 points that are in the special use, number 10 states litter patrol five days per week. Well, what five days? We're not sure. You know, it's not specific what five days. If it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it won't matter. And then, of course, the weekends would be the heaviest traffic days. We also noted that the loitering was removed from the special use permit, and we certainly would like to know why. Why would it have been taken off? That's the most critical point, the loitering. That's where the people are in the evening, on a nice, warm, sunny day, out there in that mall. So it's a major problem already for the Elgin Mall. So if they're coming here, and we hope they're not, we hope that you would have regulations that you enforce as strongly as possible. And you're making your choices and your decision. On April 4th, we'll have to make ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? No? Seeing none, okay. Thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Susan Warren. I live in Gardner Place. Prior to living in East Dundee for the last decade, I lived in Barrington Hills, and that Dominix was my shopping center. It has always been a difficult entity to exit, 25 going northbound. I'll refer you to the problem in downtown Barrington with Heinmann's, which does not have the other issues, shall we say, but the traffic issue has required them to post police to manage traffic, to stop it on 59, to allow people to exit that strip mall. So I understand the value of having income to a village, but not if the obligation or risk or danger exceeds the value of the income. The over expenditures. Now, I understand that the Elgin Mall had approximately 150 police calls last year, and they were not open a full year. They have four private, private guards within the mall. That in itself speaks to what kind of an issue this will be. We have other issues, like we're not a sanctuary city. How are you going to deal with illegal activity there? Illegal immigrants who don't belong in this country? And, and what are you going to, how are you going to enforce that? So the policing concern is a, is a huge one. Now, back in the day, when that, when that permit was granted, that was surrounded completely by vacant land. And now it is the greatest density of residential that I can ascertain within the village. I've asked our assistant supervisor?
Building inspector.
Building inspector, sorry, that if I have that data incorrect, but I believe that is correct. And so now what you're going to do is put a three-ring circus around, surrounded by the greatest residential area in the whole, in the whole village. So I find that to be incongruous. Obviously, it's not a place where you can add traffic lines on either end of that. And I know that the egress relationship with Gardner Place and the development requires combined exit through that mall. Not to mention you're putting the circus right next to the funeral home and et cetera. So if you're wrong about the revenue and the balance of this, how are you going to pay for it? You're not going to, and we haven't even touched about fire responsibilities, because of the overage of fire and, and fire calls to that entity in itself, it's the taxpayers who have to bear that burden. Again, I'll point out that between this building and where they are now, there's a lot of vacant commercial property. There's a whole mall in West Dundee. Apparently, they wouldn't take them as a, as a tenant. So I have some, some major concerns about what the data is and how the data has been mined over this, but any bill, I haven't seen, I haven't gone into a grocery store that's got four guards. I haven't gone into the dollar store that has security guards. I haven't, the mall, I don't see security guards, but this one has a minimum of four on any given day. I think that's a bigger concern. It's too bad they weren't in the old Walmart, where they're away from everybody. That might have been a viable option, but surrounded by the densest resident area now currently in the village, I think that is a core, core application, and I beg this village board to reconsider and perhaps do better diligence on the effect it's going to have. Thank you so much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Do you want me to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Dan Shapiro. Some of you may recognize me as being before this board some time ago, maybe a couple weeks ago, on the petition for the Elgin Mall. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, because I was very hopeful that the matter would be summarily approved again, but some of the comments that I've heard kind of compelled me to do so. If you would please bear with me. The folks here tonight are well-intentioned, but the public hearing has taken place. Plan Commission considered everything that it needed to consider at the public hearing, including the staff report, including public comment, and they voted in favor. This board voted in favor. There was one negative vote at the Plan Commission. There was one negative vote at, at this board. There's nothing that has changed, other than the mayor's veto, in terms of the substance of what was presented to the board and to the Plan Commission. There has nothing that has changed. Based upon that, and what I would very reluctantly, and I feel bad about saying this, very reluctantly suggest are some veiled comments about immigrants or Hispanics, which are offensive.
No, it's illegals.
Which are offensive because of this store, therefore, they're going to be illegals. That's the comment you just heard. Nothing has changed any of the criteria that this board and the Plan Commission considered for adopting the special use. I would suggest that there's other things going on, other than looking at this on the standards and the merits. I will not suggest what that is, but I think you've heard comments that could lead you to the same thoughts that I'm having. I'm not going to go through it again. You've heard time and time again what this project will bring in terms of the vitality to a mall that's been dark for a dozen years or more, and the improvements that will be, that will bring to a mall that's been vacant and dark for a dozen years or more. I'm not going to go through that again. But there's, again, I would suggest that this board's reasoned decision, which was based upon the Plan Commission's reasoned decision, should stand, period. The standards, we're not here to talk about emotion or fear or anything like that. We're here to look at the standards, and those standards have been vetted by staff, by the Plan Commission, and by this board. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Kathy Benson. I'm a resident of Gardner, and I've talked to a few of you people this week to get some information, and I thank you for what you've done and given me. My concern is, again, safety, and that's a huge concern. We live in a diverse area. Our building is diverse. My objection is increased traffic, increased risk of safety for us, exiting and entering the, the community. I'm also concerned about the, the criminal activities that happened at the Elgin Mall in Elgin, and what kind of activities are going to be here. I've heard, and I've talked to people that have said they've had keggers in the parking lots and parking, partying during the time it was open and afterwards. I want assurance that this is not going to happen. I want assurance that we're going to be safe. My neighbors are going to be safe. Again, what can you do to reassure me and our community? And we're 80 units there, about approximately 100 people, that we're going to be safe and that we can exist in the same community? Because it has not been all successful in Elgin. What is going to be different here? That's what I want to know. And I also want to know why the article on the conditions of participation on number 17 was removed, which is loitering, which is a huge component to having criminal activity. Our parking lots are close to being abated next to each other. What's going to keep our park, our cars safe, our visitors safe? That we're not going to have, you know, theft, increased theft, increased anything, because right now, we don't have it. It's been very safe where I live. I've been here for two and a half years, and I've been extremely happy being here in East Dundee. I want to continue with that. So please let us know. And I know that due diligence was done, according to Mr. Shapiro, but due diligence wasn't done with us. No one communicated with our building. No one communicated with the neighborhood. No one came in and did meetings in the dining room and asking us how we felt about it, what is our concern. And the pre-evaluation of this, why not? Why not have people involved? Why not have the community? So we're not all standing here asking why and being upset. This could have been all avoided if proper planning and pre-planning was done, which it was not. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the people that have come up so far to give their comments. I just want to express a little bit about what I saw today. I think it's a little bit sad to see. I'm Rosa Leal, and I'm the administrator of the Elgin. I'm Rosa Leal, and I'm the administrator of the Elgin Mall. I'm sorry. I think what I saw today is that some people in the room are talking about criminal activity. I do not feel that that is fair to say. From the last meetings we've had, we've had the police, chief of the police department, they came up and they've explained that there's no major criminal activity in the Elgin area. I have also toured the Dominics Building. I don't know if you've noticed all the graffiti that's already happening. We wanna come here, we wanna help protect your town. We're not here to bring more crime. We're here because we're decent people that wanna work. And we're here because I see the town, and I was, I was in the parade, and I can see how proud you are of your city. And we're here because we wanna be part of that. Anything that we need to do to fit into your norms, we wanna be there, we wanna do that. So I ask the trustees to please take a look at our original presentation and the reason that we are choosing the East Dundee area, and anything that we have already agreed to, the conditions that we're ready to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to address the board?
My name is Doug Gay. I live on Water Street. Excuse me for being a little late. I didn't realize it started at 5:30 today. I'm gonna comment on something a little different than what I've heard here in the last couple of minutes. Is your item number H is this resolution to essentially eradicate these spongy moth caterpillars with this aerial spray. My concern is, is that spray is gonna kill all of the caterpillars, butterflies, and possibly other insects as well. I'm not sure about ants, but other insects. And I think this would be a detriment to the area. If you kill the butterflies and the caterpillars, a lot of birds go down in population as well. So I just wanted to bring that up. There are other ways to combat these caterpillars that come from the gypsy moths. There are some, you can wrap around the trees and put some, something on there. And I guess I would suggest, rather than spraying and killing all of the caterpillars around, that we do something like that and maybe buy some of that kind of resolution, and maybe advertise to the community that they can come out and get it for free. And I think a lot of people would come out and put it around their trees and take care of it. And with just a few people, you could probably go through the community and maybe put an X on the trees that should be covered. And if they're not covered, then maybe even some volunteers could do that. So I would just like to speak out against your $52,000 payment for killing the caterpillars. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
It's okay.
Kinda get in line.
My name is Michael Becker. I'm a resident of Gardner Place. And before I get into that, a lot of you are probably too young to remember DDT and Rachel Carson's book Silent Spring. But you may have heard of it. So you might wanna consider that too in your decisions. You know, it does go up the food chain. But I'm concerned that we didn't get any kind of notice to be considered, to have our opinions considered before anybody voted on this thing. And I'm wondering if that's legal.
There was no notices?
We didn't know about it at all. And like I say, I'm wondering if that's legal. And if it's not, we got a lot of concerned citizens here if we're gonna pursue it. As far as the petition goes, 90% of that building signed that petition. And of the 65 houses in the surrounding area, more than 2/3 of them signed it as well. It could be reached. So average the two together, that's 78% of that area that doesn't want the traffic, doesn't want the hassle, doesn't want the problems that's gonna create. Also, speaking of traffic and probably crime, any time you get a large group of anything or anybody, you're gonna have more variety. So you're gonna have a more potential for crime. For the guy that played a race problem, I think that was despicable, played a race card. But I didn't hear anybody talking about that in all my discussions with all the whole neighborhood and all the people I live with. So how are you gonna control the traffic? And how are you gonna police? Are you planning on hiring a couple extra shifts of people to do this? You know, you're gonna need people to tell the loiteries to go somewhere else. You're gonna need people to see that people don't get out of hand when their vehicles get towed away because they parked in the wrong places. You're gonna need a lot of more policemen to direct traffic, from what I understand. And as far as increased crime, like I said, the more people you get, the more variety you're gonna have. And I've been led to understand that that area that they were in previously or are now still has a lot of crime. So, I mean, it's only common sense. You're inviting problems to the area. Why? Do you need money that bad? Bringing in a problem ain't gonna fix anything. It's gonna end up costing you more. And to the people that voted for this, yeah, election's coming up.
Sorry, I'm late. And I didn't prepare anything, but I'm...
I'm sorry, could you just give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sure. June Keebler, and I'm in Dundee, unincorporated. And I'm very concerned about spraying for the moths.
Can't hear.
I'm sorry.
Is this working? Can we have quiet in the audience, please?
Just a little louder.
Okay.
It should be working.
Okay. Did you get my name and all that? John Keebler, and I'm in Dundee, unincorporated. And I'm very concerned about spraying for gypsy moth. Our oak trees feed and are the nursery for over 500 species of butterflies and moths. They start laying their eggs in April and go all the way through July. There isn't a time that you can spray that you wouldn't be killing decent, wonderful moths and butterflies that are pollinating our prairies, our woodlands, our crops. They're an incredibly important part of our ecosystem. We've got to stop this war on insects if we're ever gonna get control of climate change as well. Insects are that very important genre that connects all of life to the rest of the web cycle. They collect the earth, they connect the earth to all the other species, the birds and the small mammals and all of the things that eat those. So it's an incredibly important group of animals. And we shouldn't be having a war on them. So I'd just like to say that and hope that you can pause and find other ways to deal with this issue. I did speak with an expert who is an entomologist professor, and he has said very definitely that oaks can go through a couple of completely losing all of their leaves, and they'll still regenerate if they're otherwise healthy. And that gypsy moths generally go away during a wet, a normally wet spring. So it's when we have very dry springs that they become a problem. And so it seems like we could step back a minute, do something different this year. And if we end up having to spray, then we'll spray. But not, not by making a war on insects right away as our first go-to. So I really appreciate you hearing me when I didn't register. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Cliff Serge, Kane County Board. Couple of residents had reached out last week regarding the moth issue. I don't understand this side or that side of it. I took a few minutes, reached out to the Forest Preserve District. Commissioner Kios was going to, he is here to answer any questions you might have. We reached out to Ben, who, from the Forest Preserve District, who did have some input. All of that was sent in an email to Erica. I included your fellow board members that share this region, Jared Sanchez, Chris Kios, myself, here to help in any way we can. We don't have one side or the other. But I just wanted to let the board know people had reached out to us, that we had communicated. Have a great evening.
Great. Okay. Was anybody else interested in addressing the board? Anybody out there? Got a busy night today? Nobody? Okay, seeing none. That'll take us then to our consent agenda. We're gonna go ahead and make a motion on all of these items because it's so long, rather than read it into the record. But are there any items that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I actually would like to remove H. So we can look into other options.
Is that all? That was the only item?
Spongy moth, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Sarah, Kathleen?
I'm scanning, sorry. No.
Okay. Then if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Minus item H. Minus item H.
Minus H, yes.
I will move to approve the consent agenda. Items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, and J, excluding H.
Any questions, comments? No? Kathleen?
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Soder?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trusty Coonzie?
Yes.
Okay. That'll take us to our regular agenda items. Item number six, that would be H. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. H. H first. All right. Then we need a motion on that.
I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Hendrickson Flying Services, Inc. of Rochelle, Illinois, to complete two aerial applications of BTK to eradicate spongy moth caterpillars in the village of East Dundee in the amounts of $52,400.
Second. I apologize, I was thinking we were tabling it.
No, we're just kidding.
Okay.
Well, so I think Tricia and I are kind of on the same page right now. I was, I'm thankful for what was brought up tonight. I understand that the spongy moths are a huge issue in our area, and we need to do something about it. But I am, I've got a monarch garden in my yard. Like, I'm, we're really hard time accepting that it's gonna kill out everything and not just the targeted species. So I'm, I would prefer to table it right now and look into more options. If there are any other options, we can talk further about it. But I have a hard time hearing that it's gonna kill out everything. And I know that that's disappointing to a lot of people, and the oak trees are very, very important. But it's, there's a lot more wildlife than just the one thing, and I wanna be sure before. I don't like vote on some, voting on something or I just feel like I got new information tonight.
Especially if there are other solutions that the state recommended, I'd like to look into those further, even though, Phil, I know you did. But I feel like there's probably some more research we can do. I definitely don't want any little birds that I...
Yeah.
So Sarah, you make a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathleen? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other questions concerning it?
We don't have to amend anything. While we have, like, Chris Kios and some of the people from the county, could we hear from, if Chris or Jared have any thing they feel would be helpful to help us understand the weighing between saving the trees and the insects? Just 'cause they're here.
Yeah. It's one or the other. I mean, we've talked a lot about butterflies, but we also haven't talked about the trees and the green canopy and the green infrastructure that is potentially gonna be dying off. And then there won't be a, any kind of environment for birds or anything else that is there right now. So I have a question for Chris or whoever. It was our understanding that the gypsy moth caterpillars hatch earlier than a lot of the other caterpillar varieties, like the monarchs and that kind of thing. Is that the case? And also, the fact that the gypsy moths mainly are on oak trees? It's a two-part question. Mainly on, feed off of oak trees and oak leaves, whereas monarchs and the others are more feeding off and living and habitating in milkweed and that type of environment. The monarchs don't necessarily live in the oak trees.
No. They will be in the area of the spray, though. And it's, it's, the BT's Bacillus thuringensis is a bacterium that actually kills the insect. And it's fairly specific for butterflies and moths, but it's not as specific to the gypsy moth. So if you have a butterfly garden, and it gets in there, and the caterpillars eat that, they have to ingest it, and it doesn't kill it. It does kill it. My concern, or I guess, so it's not specific exactly to that, not that it'll kill everything. I think that it's best to look at this as just how much resistance and resilient are the oak trees that you have right now? If they're defoliated, and I looked up a couple of the, I think, she used the reference, the New York State and the University of Illinois. And they said that oak trees can be completely defoliated for, New York said two years, and the University of Illinois said several years. So if it's, the trees are completely defoliated, that's when there's a problem. Maybe the weaker trees would then have an issue. But if it's just a partial defoliation, and I'm not familiar with just exactly how much has been defoliated or how often, and that's something that, there should be some numerical formula to say, you know, if it's gone on for two or three years, then it's time to take care of it because the oak then will have a, potentially have a problem. Lot will lose oaks then. But oaks are very, very resilient. There are, I believe, mentioned up to 500 different species of insects on oak trees. They are, they're the maximum supporter of wildlife in the prairie, in Illinois, in this area. So it's really important that we keep the balance of what's going on for other insects so that the birds can feed it and things like that. Do we know how many, how many years it's been completely defoliated? Has it been completely defoliated?
I don't believe so. I mean, the first exposure Catherine you brought to our attention was... Maurice?
I believe in the village, last year was the first defoliation in two major neighborhoods. Their defoliation varied, probably from 75%, maybe 30 to 40 on the west side.
Okay. So I, my guess is that if, specifically, they refer to complete defoliation. An oak tree, if it's not, if it's completely defoliated, that means that you would be looking at a bare tree with no leaves at all. Then that would be a problem, a severe problem. That's when, then maybe the spray would be the option to do that. If the tree isn't completely defoliated, the leaves are then obviously absorbing light and creating food for the tree. So they will survive. They, a lot have been around here for 300 years. I understand this is a, this is a new insect that's been just introduced recently in the United States. So it is an invasive species. But I would make sure that you're basing it on some really sound things, like just exactly how much has been defoliated and how long it's been. And I would give it, I would give nature the best chance to recover on its own. Just that, and that's just my personal opinion. Now, as far as the, I'm president of the Forest Preserve. We have never sprayed for gypsy moth or the spongy moth it's called. But we do, and it's been a policy in the past, to approve anything, any federal programs, as we just look at it. If they, if they do the sampling and find out that there's a really severe problem, then we approve of it in areas that are next to our forest preserves. then we approve of it in areas that are next to our forest preserves. But I, I asked our executive director, who's also a naturalist, if he was aware of any instances where the spongy moth had killed an oak tree. And in Kane County, up to this point, there's no specific tree that was just completely defoliated out of all the trees. We have, we have 23,000 acres of forest preserves, so.
So Chris, have you...
I don't know that postponing would be, like, totally out of, that might be the best question, the best answer, I think, for the whole thing, to make sure that you're answering the base questions, like how much has it defoliated, before you spend $52,000 and disrupt the environment.
Have you been looking for it on, on forest preserve property?
Have I?
Yeah, I mean, if you're in your department.
Yeah, well, we're aware, we've got naturalists, we've got three naturalists that are in it all the time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're aware of all of the, we have programs. Our biggest concern, of course, is the invasive species from just plants, but we haven't seen anything, we've lost a lot of, and I, and I, I feel for the guys that are worried about their trees. I had a couple of smaller ash trees in front of my house and when the Emerald Ash Bore came through, they were gone, so. But this is a completely different kind of thing and I think that if, it seems reasonable to just keep an eye on it and then perform some of the things that can be done by hand, like this gentleman spoke about, there's a number of references to just physical control, like brushing off the leaf, the egg masses on the trunks. And, because we're not talking about thousands of acres here, it can be performed, or wrapping the trees that have infestations with special, with a, I think it was even as simple as a burlap bag with some sticky stuff on it. And then as they migrate up and down, it catches them, something really simple that doesn't really harm the environment.
Could I call him?
President, I'm just, one minute.
Sure.
I apologize for your honor. I'm looking for the owner of a white Subaru, what is it? 508 Water Street?
Yeah.
I need a relocated.
Oh.
Sorry.
Mike, do you want to comment?
So, I'm pro butterfly too, but to be careful, the, our freedom, Chicago says that the first sighting of the monarchs in Illinois will be the end of May. The BTK is active and virulent for three, four days after each spray. And then if the protein disintegrates. So, you know, again, I do understand the naturalist perspective and not wanting it, but it's durable for a very short period of time. Also, the monarchs will only lay their eggs on the milk plant, I believe, and the young will only feed on the milk plant. So, you know, there are ways to minimize that. I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, manage it. Now, my presentation last week was the burlap bag, was the insecticide around the base of the tree. And hour and a half a day, we could not control it and we had 70% deforestation. And you're talking about trees that are on many hundreds of properties and it's not going to get done. So just please don't think that those are simple solutions. You saw last week that they're not, some people have tried. This is a hammer approach, I, I do understand that. Some have offered to use something that was specific to just the gypsy moth and, you know, that's, that's hurtful because it's not commercially available. And University of Connecticut developed it and it couldn't be built, so it's not viable economically. So then there's this other one. It was also suggested that the trees be bored and treated and with the number of trees and the number of properties and the expense. So you're talking about $50 an acre about, for the spray? And I spent, my wife and I spent over $1,000 on burlap and insecticide and tree fertilization to protect ours. And, you know, we're doing that again this year, we will do that again this year, but... So, so please don't think this is going to, the habitat is important, it's important to me too, but it's, this is not an eradication of everything that occurs on that perimeter in our village. It's, it's a, it strikes for three days, it's caterpillars only at this point, and BTK has been in use for over 60 years as approved. And I included some websites and things in my presentation. So, but just to add to what you're saying, some things look practical in the stop-to-spread diagram and in fact, the kind of invasion that we have, ineffective. And, and I do agree with you, it might not be the first year, honestly, but our oak trees have also been suffering from blight, some of them, we've lost five on our property alone. So to think that they're all equally healthy isn't a good mindset to leave this meeting with either. They're in, some are endangered.
Sure. Yeah, almost always there'd be some endangered.
I appreciate your tone too, it's very easy to talk.
And then, but just to counteract, oh, gee, there goes the light.
Did I do that?
No. The, remember that we're not just talking, and the monarchs are very important, they are endangered species and of course they're the most obvious ones. But again, there's 500 species, a lot of those are gonna be caterpillars of different species that you probably don't even notice.
Sure.
And I'm sure there's plenty of them around, but they again feed the baby bees, or baby birds that go and...
I would, I would offer, it's easier to bring in caterpillars another year than it is to take down 300-year old trees. It just, you have to balance things right. Thank you.
When does it become time to use, to consider the parallel action?
Way beyond my expertise.
So, I did, I will say, I did look into that option. It's a product called Splat, and it's not effective at the level of infestation that we have, unfortunately. We just have too many of these bugs at this point.
Part of it is that the males will fly up to two miles to find a female. So if the infestation isn't treated just a little bit further away, those males are still doing their job, so to speak. And that, on the picture that I showed you of the Lincoln Street tree, that tree had egg masses counts that were unbelievable. And that tree was not in the counted area, if you will, but it's within the spray area. And I'm sorry for kicking you.
Yeah, I think one thing we should consider before we vote on tabling this is that the longer we wait, the more risk the monarchs are. Because if they are truly, you know, dormant before we spray, then that's great, we wait longer, then they're not dormant anymore. Just so we all know, I did look on the Illinois Department of Agriculture, but sorry, they are spraying 3,000 acres with this BTK this year. They're also spraying a significant amount of Splat, too, for the areas that are less infested. But they are taking this seriously and they're, they're treating quite a bit of land in Aurora, Galena, Lamont, and Wayne, West Chicago. So, I mean, it's not a, it's not an experimental treatment, it's a proven treatment, it's an effective treatment. And like I said, if we wait, we're going to be endangering monarchs more. Now, I'm not saying that all to say that we should definitely do this right now. I guess my thought, actually, hearing everybody's concerns, is that what if we, we lowered our total coverage area to just the estates area? Would that be...
Terrace, don't forget. Dunney Terrace is as affected as estates.
Okay. So what if we just did these areas instead of the entire? We could do that, that, for me, my part, I, of course, I agree that we can't not do nothing. But the, the one item of this whole thing that I struggle with is, is the buffer. And I understand the township's position on this, but it's gonna be very difficult to, I think, treat this problem effectively if we're going to cut off a 300 swath, foot swath border around an affected area and assume that it's gonna come to any good. And in addition to that, I'm gonna find it very difficult to address the concerns of those residents who are in that buffer. What do I tell them? You know, how do, how do we address that? You know, we're gonna go ahead and spend the village's money on trying to eradicate this problem, but not yours. And then are we actually really just spinning our wheels here? Because if we don't cover, you know, everything in as far as an affected area, a known affected area, what have we accomplished? So, I mean, this is what I'm struggling with and I don't pretend to have all the answers and to know all the facts. I have done some research with the, the Department of Agriculture and have found that, yeah, this BTK stuff is, it's been around a long time. It is safe from a pet standpoint. I've made the idea or the suggestion of letting people know to cover their swimming pools, that's obviously not a, a concern either. But again, you know, we're kind of up in the air on this one and so, we're not really two, you know, opposing sides on this one and I, I don't know if making a decision tonight is, is really necessarily the way to go. I, I have no problem with it if, if it's what the board wants to do, but it seems like there's some information that can be added, so I would suggest we look into that.
President, I have something, I just wanna add, I have been a monarch, monitor for 10 years in educating our local communities on them, and they do come as early as beginning of May.
The what, what do, the other, other monarchs?
The monarchs can come as early as the beginning of May.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, so if we know that this BTK will be effective for, what was it that someone said, a three to four, five-day period roughly?
Ten on the outset. It's a protein that degrades very quickly in the environment.
Okay. So, there was a motion on the floor to table, I think there was a second. Does anybody else have any discussion on this one? Any? Trish, no?
When would the, if we did do this right now, how soon would that spraying take effect? Do you know, with Hendrick's schedule?
According, excuse me, according to the Flying Service as well as the Department of Agriculture, it's a function of moth and leaf development.
So we wait till the leaves sprout?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be full sprout of the leaf, does it? Because I mean, by the end of May, I mean, it should be available by...
The leaf has to be open to catch the...
My understanding, that's correct, the leaf has to be fully open so that it can catch the, the BTK product that the caterpillars can feed on.
Okay. So, April, obviously, we have.
Yes.
So that...
I don't know, just to add to the timing of, if you ultimately decide to move forward with this, I don't know that the next approval, which would be April 17th, the next board meeting, that may not be enough time to spray this year. Because there's a, a plan has to be submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration, they review it, issue a permit, so on and so forth. So that may, just food for thought, may prevent that from happening in 2023.
Okay. Yeah, so tabling this is essentially a no vote because we wouldn't have time to vote again on it this year, or be a, tabling it for the year?
Not 100% definitive, but it, it's certainly a possibility, a strong possibility, from what I, my understanding is.
Depending on how early spring came and the leaf, and there was a leaf out.
Correct, yes, and also the, the timing of the FAA review, review of the flight plan.
Okay.
Which could take a week to two weeks, two, week to two-week process.
Well, actually, that, that leads me back to my initial concern about the buffer area. The township, you said, is a buffered zone that you have, I mean, or is it not? I mean, if we were to, if we were to treat all the edge...
It is a buffered zone, it's something we are willing to protect and take action to protect. There's a reason why the state has provided that for us, so...
Okay, so it's not 300 feet into the library springs, in other words, it's, the buffer zone is 300 feet into East Dundee?
Correct.
Now, again, it just seems to be kind of at odds with what is gonna be effective to try and treat this.
But I, so if you look at the notes I set, for library springs, there, there's two sides of that, that the buffer is inconsequential. It is about 68, Rayco, Rec Center, the senior living facility and so, if the buffer is needed there, it doesn't affect, about 25 is another buffer that is inconsequential, where the trouble a little bit is on North Lake Tarpway, Wannan, Dundee's, the north side of, of that. And then, of course, into Lake Shore Drive, there's infected trees right where the pond and the, there's a dam that, that creates a little stream in there. And all of those properties have trees that I saw as infected and defoliated. So, to honor the, the buffer that you fired, would need an alternative for those trees, but maybe something very, very specific, which is expensive, you know, per acre, but you could, you can count the trees in those areas. You cannot hardly count the trees if you look at Dunney Terrace and everything. So, I guess I'm saying even, even with the buffer, you know, I hope to convince the buffer could go away. That isn't going to happen, right? So if you have to honor the buffer, then I'd say, then, then what's a very specific approach to those two 300-foot lines? And, and then treat for sure the other two neighborhoods that, if I could suggest that, that's what I would look at.
It's about six properties.
Yeah.
It's about six properties that...
On the north edge?
On the north and on, on Lake Shore Drive.
Six very big properties.
Six very big properties, yeah.
With a lot of them, so I mean, I pictured some of them, it's, it's not simple, but...
No, and I've seen some of the residents...
Two acre, five acre properties.
Properties, too, along Lake Shore Drive, and it's not good.
But also I drove around the roads today to kind of prepare, and there are lots of neighborhoods in the village that don't have the predominance of oaks, so I, I get it, it's, it's a shame to hammer there too, but it's very cost, cost-effective and, and it provides maybe some protection for next year, the counts could be a lot lower and nature, even if we had a dry spring, nature could help. Because we did see gypsy moths here before last, but the, the numbers were so low and we picked them, but boom, it was really bad, I'm sorry, 2021, we saw them, but not, you know, you couldn't see the sky through our trees like we did last year. And I'm sorry again for kicking you.
No, 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 I appreciate the input.
That's a good option.
You know, I just, I'm one of those residents and it's a perspective and I thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask if the township has any leeway as far as whether or not to allow this and the type of material used? I mean, if BTK is the problem, if, if that bacteria type based, you know, particulates is a problem, would any other sort of approach be considered? I mean, or is, is the problem with the buffer, the type of...
We have to check to see, again, the buffer was created legally to protect those natural areas, of course, so, so we have to go back and check, we have to check with IDNR. And again, you know, I think, remember Kios said it best, like, let, give nature one more year. From hearing from this gentleman, with all due respect, and I know it's hard on these trees, is your trees were sick anyway, they had pathogens, so those trees are probably gonna die, so they're gonna spend $50,000 trying to protect some trees that are maybe gonna die from something else anyway. And in the meantime, we're gonna get rid of hundreds of species, you know, for one season. So, you know, we'll, we'll check and I can get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, that'd be good.
It may be a week or so, but, you know, if you need to decide tonight, I can't give you an answer. And I'm sure Village Green wouldn't want it on their side since they asked me to help them install a new butterfly garden on the property.
Okay, okay. No, I, I appreciate it, I just, I'm just wondering, the other question then is, with regard to the buffer, that's state law? That's based on state law?
That's what the IDNR is saying.
Okay, okay.
But how do you hold that accountable, like, in your...
Yeah, right, and that's why I'm asking if there's any leeway or, you know, wiggle room on it.
Sure, they wanted to check the grass and...
Wrong word.
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, well, as far as where we're gonna leave this one then, there's a motion on the floor to, to table it, there's a second. Does anybody else have any questions on it? There's other information, I think, that we can look to try and get. Also, I'm just wondering too, and Erica, you might wanna chew on this one, to see if there's any way that we could accelerate if we do find a solution prior to our next meeting to approve. So I realize that it'd probably require a special meeting to be called between... special meeting to be called between now and, and April 17th. But at least that's an option for us, too.
Why do we not have a meeting on the 3rd?
Uh, it's a date for the election, and apparently there's no one. So, but there could be one later, either that week afterward, Thursday, or perhaps the next Monday, right after, which would be, what, 3rd, 7th, 9th? So-
I was thinking that, too. I was thinking that, too.
Yeah. I mean, right. It, it's an option for us. But, I mean, really, the, the more time we can gain to try and, and come up with a solution, and an effective one, an amiable solution, the better. So, so at that, does anyone else have any questions? Any comments?
No, I, I think, I think what I'd like to see is, you know, respecting what's going on with the 300-foot buffer, instead of just single prom plan, to make sure that those trees that are on, or those, the trees that are on the property that are within that 300-foot buffer aren't just left to die or whatever.
Right. And that's my, no-
I'm being dramatic. I'm sorry.
No, no.
But are, are left to not be, you know, taken care of.
Well, also too, that-
Taking care of everything else.
Yeah, that those residents are left holding the bags, so to speak. You know, I mean, if we're going to apply this for the good of the, the community-
Right.
We need to consider the whole community. So-
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So our motion is to postpone until April 17th?
Right. Well, until such time as we-
To the next meeting.
Come up with another one, right? So-
Call the question.
Call the question.
Yep.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That will take us then to item B of our agenda, if I could have a motion.
That was the consent of the-
That was incredible.
Oh, right. So we have, the center of the agenda is done.
Reece, Ross, Merrick-
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Hey, I had that one checked off. I apologize. Yeah, we have a presentation with Reece and Ross.
The gentleman who was going to do this presentation was not able to make it tonight, so he's asked to be placed on the message.
That would be great. We'll just table item A then, and go right to B if we could have a motion.
Do we need a motion to table item A?
Um, it's just a presentation, so.
Oh, correction.
So then, moving on to item B.
Correct.
If we could, if we could-
Have a motion on that?
Yeah. And if we could have some quiet in the audience, please, so we can continue business. I'd like to make a motion to authorize an override of the village president's veto of ordinance 23-08.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Second? Is there any discussion or? Well, this is, this is not a special use permit. This is the designation for the indoor mall. Is that correct?
That was the text amendment, I believe.
The text amendment?
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. It's for the text amendment. Meaning what?
Meaning this-
Making the definition.
This will add a definition to the village code for indoor mall.
Okay. So it's not just a motion to either override or not override, correct?
No. If, whichever way it goes, if the vote is affirmative to override the veto, then the definition of indoor mall will be added to the village's code.
Okay.
So to be clear, though, what I heard was a motion to authorize the veto. Is that correct? Because want to make sure you understand what the motion is.
It says to authorize slash not authorize.
Right.
I didn't say-
Authorize and override.
Override. Right.
Do you want me to read it again?
No, I don't. And there was a second. So any other questions? Catherine?
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Present.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes. Okay. That'll take us to item C, if we could have a motion. I'll move to authorize an override of the village president's veto, ordinance 23-09.
Second.
So that one was for the text amendment, and this one?
This one's for the special use.
This one's, okay.
Now, I would just like to reiterate, my reasons for vetoing this were not for anything other than the existing ordinances that we have in the village pertaining to parking. And so since no effort has been made to resolve that issue, if this is approved and the, and the override holds, we'll be in violation of our own laws. So we have a, a motion and a second. And was there any discussion? Anybody else have anything?
Well, one of the, the observations I had was that if, and, and I would love clarification either from Chris or from anyone else, is that if we are talking about the same square footage as Dominix had, Dominix was also not in compliance with the parking code.
No, because Dominix, easy, a third of it, was storage, and the storage room would not have been included in the square footage computation of the parking space requirements. And neither would the size of the aisles, which would have been different. So while we've been told that the proposal for the, the Elgin Mall to move in East Dundee was going to take basically one end of the store or space to the other, then that whole floor space would be used as computation for the number of spaces required. So, but it is an interesting-
I do have a, and Chris, when you were doing your calculations, were you taking into account all of the different wall dividers and the thicknesses of the wall dividers then, to that extent?
No.
Right. Okay.
No, just the gross square footage.
So you just did the whole gross square footage. You didn't take into account the walls?
Okay. And that's, and that's legit.
And they're substantial. I mean, you know, it's broken up a lot.
Right. But I mean, if you, I, I think if you were to take into account the floor space that's occupied by the partitions themselves, regard, you know, depending on, of course, the, the west, the, the dimension of those partitions, it may lower the requirement by three or four parking spaces, is my guess. Perhaps five at most. We're 67 short. So my, you know, my, my point, of course, is that no matter how you slice it, we're still going to be short on parking spaces. And that's how I'm viewing this. And there hasn't been any either discussion or solutions offered up.
Well, there were discussions, actually. You weren't here at the meeting, of course. But there were discussions. So let's not say that.
Okay. But it, the way it stands, with what's been presented, we're still short. So I'm just throwing that out there. And it's up to the board now to decide how to proceed.
And I'm sorry, as a resident, I was here, and they were amended. They were not, the parking position, everything, it wasn't tabled, it wasn't discussed. There was a lot of questions, and there were no solutions for when President Hining was there.
So the discussion took place about the parking, and what was discussed was, these shop owners do a lot of carpooling, a lot of public transportation. They have a parking lot now that they don't fill up, that they don't foresee a parking issue. Additionally, this is private property. This is not an issue like we have downtown, where we have a lot of different businesses using the street parking that we have to worry about everybody else. If this parking lot becomes filled up, that is the problem of these vendors. They will have to deal with that. That is the problem of this landlord.
It's the village's problem.
Where do you live?
What's that?
Where do you live?
I lived on Van Buren. Sure.
It's good. No, seriously, I, I understand it.
Let me say something else, actually.
You know, well, and, and it's also been offered that because there are going to be restricted hours, and there are going to be empty stores as part of this, the shopping center, that the requirements for that parking issue is less valid, if you will. I'm, I'm not buying that either.
Great. So let me, let me say something else.
Well, please, I have the floor at the moment. But-
Wait, I didn't give up the floor. I was talking before you went out.
He was.
Okay. What are we going to do when this entire mall fills up?
That's my point.
No, the whole, the whole shopping center, not just the Dominix.
Right. Right. If we're worried about one store filling up the entire parking lot, what happens then when we have an entire mall filled up? I mean, right? I don't understand.
What don't you understand?
I don't understand how it is that we're going to fill up this entire parking lot with one store. If, if we don't want any, any storefronts in this entire shopping mall because we're worried about traffic or worried about parking, then we should just close down the entire mall.
No, no.
Tear the whole thing down.
I don't think, no, no, no. Sorry. My, my point, Scott, is not that this one operation coming in is going to take up all 394 parking spaces. That's not, that's not the point. What was presented to us when the petitioner first approached us was that in addition to other benefits for them to come in, the other surrounding units in the shopping center would fill up as a result. That's all well and good, and we welcome that.
Do we? Because it sounds like we don't want that.
Well, no, no. That, and what I'm saying is that in the event that that happens, the parking is then going to be an issue. What I'm saying is if we have a law, we have an ordinance that sets in place the requirements for these parking spaces, if you don't want to adhere to that, that's fine. That's the board's option. However, then you need to repeal that law.
That, that point is backwards.
There are plenty of businesses in this town.
Where, where, where would those patrons park?
Well, no. And, and that's, that's, right. That's my point. It, let's take the situation whereby the entire shopping center is fully occupied. There are no vacancies at all. If that were to happen, based on the, the Elgin Mall coming in, it would require 461 parking spaces. What we have right now is 394. We are going to be short 67 parking spaces.
And that's for the whole parking lot?
Correct. Correct.
What, what, where do the other people park? The, the other businesses, the other patrons, and the other businesses?
I'd like to have the building official clarify.
I'm just trying to make that clear to everybody.
We're going to let the building official clarify.
The parking requirement that you calculated was based on the owned portion of the mall, not the entire mall, because the mall is owned by two separate entities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's, the, the entire mall is more spaces and is not currently occupied to capacity. So just clarifying that if, that the calculation that you made was based only on the portion of the shopping center that's owned by the Dominics and then the adjacent space.
The south end.
So is that one, is that one half of the shopping center, or is that a little more than?
It's about three quarter.
It's probably about two, two thirds.
Two thirds. So maybe-
His figure was the whole shopping center.
No, no, no.
Yes, it was. I counted it myself.
No, no. Sir.
It's not the calculation I used. It was for the, the, the shopping center that is owned on the south end. It's, it's up, there's two owners, one on the north end, which owns about a third, and one in the south end, owns about two thirds, maybe a little bit more than two thirds.
Right.
I didn't count any parking spaces that they don't own.
To the north. So if, if all, my, and my point still holds, if all of the units in the south portion of that shopping center, that south two thirds, were fully occupied, the requirement based on ordinance for parking would be 461 parking spaces. We currently have in that portion 394. Now, if you want to have spillover and use a, a, a very squishy approach to figuring out the requirements or adhering to our own ordinances, you, yes, you can go ahead and start talking about spillover. However, how are we going to handle when the north owner of the shopping center has problems with the south owner? That's a battle I really want to avoid.
That counter is wrong. I counted myself. The, the south portion of that shopping center has 293 spaces. The south portion only. Unless you count wrapping around the, the, the businesses that face the south, that's an extra 38. 293 and 38 is what? 331?
Okay.
No.
Well, our, our initial count was, was 394. But Chris, was it taken into account, your numbers taken into account, any of the north end?
No.
Okay. So-
That's wrong.
Well, we're still short, is my point. And so-
Is there a cross access agreement in place?
Can I speak?
Sure. If parking is an issue, we have 20,000 square feet to the north where the funeral home is and all those medical centers that are vacant. We'll knock that down and create the 67 parking spaces. If parking is really the issue here.
Well, parking isn't just the issue. It's the, it's the ordinances that we're trying to adhere to.
There's some racist comments being thrown. But if parking is-
Racist? Why are you throwing that into their body? That's a ridiculous and insulting thing to say. It has nothing to do with anything. You know, all that does is deflect the point.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. What we tried to explain both before this board and the plan commission is that when, when there are future occupants taking space in the shopping center, those occupants will come in with a request. Their request will be, they want to do whatever, plus whatever the required parking is. If they need a variance to accommodate their parking, they will ask for a variance. But right now, right now, the amount of spaces for this particular use does not overwhelm the number of spaces that are provided. What could happen is if there, like I said, if there's a future user and you say, you guys want 12 spaces, and there's only room for eight, or staff, says it, in their infinite wisdom, then they got to come in for a variance before the plan commission, and then before you. What we also said was the fact that based upon informal, let me get my notes here. Mayor, if I may, the entire mall is 97% vacant. This particular use takes up about 66% of the mall. So if you use that for 66% of the parking spaces, there's enough parking here to accommodate this use. So I think the, the fear or the claim that you're violating your own ordinance is, is a red herring. It's just not accurate.
Until it is a problem. And that's my point. I'm looking down the road. You're looking at today.
No, that's not true, Mayor. If you, if you recall what I just said, if there is someone else who wants to come in for a request, they will come in for a request in the future for a variance.
True. True.
And, and they can be accommodated that way.
Sure they can.
So I'm not going to, I'm not here to relitigate what the staff, what the plan commission, and what this board found in your absence. I am here to tell you that parking can be accommodated and will be accommodated, and there's no shortage of parking.
I, I want to give an exact count of the spaces just in front of the Dominix store from, from, from the very front all the way to those adjacent, about 25 is 137. 137. And that's it. I don't challenge anybody to, to say anything different.
And, and then, I appreciate that. As far as variances that anybody would come to us in the future is concerned, yes, if, if there is problems and somebody wants to come in to that space and the operation would require a certain number of spaces that just aren't available, they would come to us and say, hey, can you overlook it? That's what a variance basically does. My point is, is that if that happens, what's the answer? And we're going to have to face that then. You won't be here, but we will. That's my only point. Now, what I'm saying to the board is that if you want to go for this, that's fine. But what I'm saying is that right now, to approve this does not adhere to our ordinance.
What I don't understand, with all due respect, Mayor, is how you feel that your voice after the fact, after the staff, after the plan commission, after the board, after the meeting that you weren't here, somehow carries the day. It doesn't.
I'm not suggesting that. All I'm trying to do is enlighten some people who are not maybe familiar with some of the other aspects of it.
I think your staff is quite familiar with everything. And I trust them, as I'm sure you do, too.
Well, if you do trust them, sir, then why wouldn't you-
Calling the question.
Yep.
Excuse me?
We're calling the question.
Calling the question. Okay.
We're, we're, we're wrapping around with a lot of the same information and the same arguments. And I'd like to call the question and take the vote.
Okay.
Can I just ask for clarification on the prior vote? Was, was the vote to override the veto?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure how it was phrased.
I would like to say one thing, too. The loitering was taken off because it's already, you can't loiter on our public property. That's already an order.
It's already-
Yeah. That was a concern of the chief, that he didn't want to arrest Girl Scouts.
I just want to ask, hold on one second. I would just like to ask the board to stay on the topic.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, there is no loitering.
We need to do, we need to do a vote on the-
Okay. If there are no more comments from the board, Catherine?
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Present.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes. Okay. That'll take us to item E, which is a discussion to the response to request for a proposal.
No, D.
Our P, uh, D was just voted. So this is E.
No, D. No.
D is in the proposal.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept a proposal from Madeline Dieter- I'll make a motion to accept a proposal from Madeline Dieter's three-line art for muralist services at Seven North Jackson Street. A second.
Can I ask, I mean, I, I saw the, the information in the packet and it looks interesting. One from the other are, you know, it's kind of a flip of a coin, but does the board not have an opportunity?
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
I can't hear.
Just give them a chance to move.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, I realize that this amount of money is below threshold for, for approval and so forth, but, and I know this one went before our Arts Committee, which is all well and good, but does that exclude the board from getting a say in the, the choice? Because then this didn't come before the board as far as, this one here is coming up with, this is our choice, Ms. Dieter's is what we decided. The board isn't getting any say in, in what, I don't know, how many, we had six or seven others?
No. The board established the Arts Council to do this business for, for the board, to vet this type of suggestion, et cetera. But yes, the board does have a say because the board right now has this in front of it. If the board decides to move forward, they can move forward. If the board decides, hey, we'd like to look at some other folks, they can decide that.
So the Arts, I'm the chair of the Arts Council, many, the Arts Council, and we had about eighteen to twenty mural applicants, RFQs, and then we brought it down to three and we interviewed three of the candidates and along with the building owner and the Arts Council and the building owner came to this conclusion that this was the one we liked the most, not just because of perspective of the art, but also the knowledge of the materials and what they would be using and how they would use it, and also their experience with large murals and many other, am I missing anything?
Correct, yeah, I think you touched all points.
Okay. So that's, so this is the recommendation of the Arts Council coming here from the board.
One more, one more point is that the, what is shared is a rough sketch. All of the artists had a very rough sketch because we're not asking them to put in all the time to design completely. And so what you're seeing isn't a final product. Looking at their past work and hearing about their concept, we've made a recommendation to go with this person, but we would be pushing them to have a much cleaner sketch and working in materials that were brought up.
And also East Dundee in, in the design.
And to that point.
The logo.
The, the windows.
Or just the letters.
Yeah.
To that point, the windows are, in each one of the renderings that we saw, the windows were a blocked off blank. I've since talked to the owner of the building and to Great Spirit Hardwoods and they have no objection to us covering them.
Right.
Yep.
So that would allow, we'd have to obviously talk to whoever the muralist is to, hey, you know what, you gotta pay the whole thing, so.
Yeah. The, the owner did tell that to the three finalists and they're aware that they can update their sketch with more artwork now.
Okay, was there any other discussions then? No? Catherine?
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trustee Coonsey?
Yes. Okay, now that will take us to item E, which is a discussion for the response to a request for a proposal, twenty-three dash one, dash zero-one, soliciting real estate projects for the village-owned property located at four oh six and four oh eight Barrington Avenue. Do we have somebody? We do, John.
Hi.
Board's yours?
Hi, John. Did you have the presentation up on the screen? Did you have a presentation? I do. Did you send it to me? Can you put that in? No, I was just gonna put it in front of everybody so that they can see it, but I mean, if everybody has it on their screens already internally.
Essentially the same information?
Yes, it is. So we had a response to our, the RFP. We are proposing to do the twenty-four units on the four oh six, four oh eight Barrington Avenue property, block off of the downtown area, two twelve-unit three-spirit buildings. In the RFP packet, and it's been reviewed, I saw it was included in the meeting minutes for tonight, we did have the elevations of the product that were in there, what we're proposing to put in, and also some cross elevations as well. This is the site plan. To where, this is Barrington Avenue right here, we have the parking on the east and on the west, and then there'd be a courtyard slash terrace area because of the slope of the hill. It's a challenged property due to the, oh, about twenty-foot elevation change in such a short run. So, we do have quite a few retaining walls that we have to step the property in to get that to work, starting on the retaining wall here, 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 and there, so. The elevations, we're looking at like a cultured stone front, or stone front, and then we're using a LP product, which is that fifty-year siding. And, so that would be on some of the vertical and horizontal planes, just to give the building some relief. The kind of tucked-in comfort level of the, or just, it's like a little tucked-in spot, so we wanted to kind of make it a little more homey or woodsy type feeling to make it blend in to that area. The interior of the apartments is gonna be the same as the, a lot of the apartments that we developed in the northwest suburbs, and then it would be, you know, the higher-end apartments with the quartz countertop stainless steel appliances and trying to give it a nice overall, a full retail approach to it. And there we have a Barrington Ave elevation, what it would look like as people are driving past that property. On the TIF request itself, what we have is we are requesting that the, let's go back to this. So the TIF request, we're requesting that the property, we are also for development, we're requesting the permit fees, the, so taking care of relief on the permit fees and also any other tap-on fees, et cetera. One of the items also that we're requesting, interest rates and material costs at this time is, well, we know the interest rates are, material cost has just been exorbitant. We feel that this rental market is at a maximum of fourteen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment and sixteen hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom apartment. When we put all the numbers together for our, we generally put about twenty-five percent equity into a project, this project overall is coming in at four point six million for the twenty-four units, and we'll put our twenty-five percent in there. But still what we have is, because of the interest rates and of the current pricing of all the materials, it's called debt coverage service ratio, and with the bank for us to get a loan, we have to hit a one point two five ratio. And this is, I'm getting towards the, one of the items in the TIF request itself. That one point two five ratio, without any assistance out of the TIF fund, would actually only come in at one point one. So essentially, when we go for financing, any bank would turn the transaction down, even with a twenty-five percent equity position, which is approximately, we have our equity position of one point one five million dollars cash in, and it would still be turned down because we can't hit our debt coverage ratios. I have calculations in which we can, there's two routes, obviously, to go to cover, to increase the income of the property in order to achieve these ratios. One would be through increased rental rates. And at this point in time, the increased rental rates, none of the northwest suburbs can support the rental rate that we'd have to charge. It'd have to be like another three hundred dollars a unit. This northwest area just does not have the ability to pay seventeen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom and, or nineteen hundred, two thousand, a month for a two-bedroom. Some of the other, like, springs and everything can get that type, but they have all amenities. You're paying for the swimming pool, the dog wash, the copper wash, the workout facilities, et cetera, which this property would not have. So the, the second alternative would be to receive a loan from the TIF funds, which you guys currently have within the village, and that would be three hundred thousand dollars. The three hundred thousand dollars would be a direct buy-down to the principal balance, the initial principal balance, which would bring us into a one point two one debt coverage ratio, and the banks we've already talked to would, would move forward in that position. For repayment of that three hundred thousand, what we were looking at is for, by the time this property is stabilized, built and stabilized, there should only be about seven years left in the existing TIF that governs this property. And with that, the first five years, we would turn back about twenty thousand dollars a year of our backside TIF proceeds, of the seventy-five percent request with a backside increment. And then at the end of the fifth year, the note would be, the balance of the note would be forgiven by the village. So, we have, in the request is the land, we have the backside TIF portion, which is a new packet, the permit fees, and then also the three hundred thousand dollar TIF note that would come with the, over the five-year period, be a hundred thousand payment and the forgiveness after the fifth year. One of the things I'd like to point out though, is our developments within the village itself, they have, to where we are, we have approximately eighty units built and one hundred percent occupied in recent years within the municipality. And with those, the existing eighty units, we do have approximately, our real estate taxes are two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So what we've been able to do is take zero generating revenue, not zero, the plot of property did have like a five thousand dollar tax bill on it, but next to nothing generating revenue in properties, and turn those around to where the overall real estate taxes are two hundred and forty thousand a year. Erica, what would be the amount that the village receives out of two hundred and forty? Without a TIF?
It's about eight percent.
So eight? So it's generating twenty thousand dollars a year, direct income to the village, even after the TIFs subside. During that, there's greater income. Another point that we're, that we always look at when we develop within a city municipality is what is the financial impact of that municipality and what is it bringing? With the Barrington Ave project, we would have a total of a hundred and four units within the Village of East Dundee. I've taken the average King County income, depends on which website you look at, King County, US Census Bureau, or whatever, they all vary, but they're anywhere from eighty-four to eighty-eight thousand dollars a year for the median income. I'm using eighty-four thousand. If we take away the taxation at about twenty-seven percent of that, and then for disposable income, those numbers vary also between every government entity as to what is actually disposable. Thirty percent seems to be the average. I'm using ten percent. I have my thirty cents left after my dollar, about a third of it's gonna be spent locally, the other two-thirds might be spent outside of the area. So I'm just using the ten percent after-tax number. The properties that we have currently, and then with this proposed property overall, are generating in the Village of East Dundee, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of spend. And that is direct spend within this community exclusive of the outside spend that they, of their disposable income. So it does impact the community significantly. And alone, these twenty-four units would be about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year that would be spent in the downtown businesses, restaurants, and in East Dundee. And so what is the financial benefit to all? I know that the ask is quite strong on the TIF side, but the financial benefit to the community as a whole, which the TIF has been designed for, is to revitalize business and development within the community. An extra a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of spend that's a block, two blocks and a half away from the downtown, I think would be, make a significant impact on those businesses. You know, the restaurants and the shops and all the amenities that the downtown has to offer. So that's basically it.
Okay. So, just to kind of overview this one a bit, the land, you want that for free, waivers of all tap-on and all permit fees.
Correct.
You want three hundred thousand dollars loan from the village, of which you'll pay back thirty thousand of.
Pay back one hundred dollars of.
A hundred thousand of, okay. And then seventy-five percent of the existing TIF.
The village loan would be through the TIF funds that you currently have within your TIF accounts.
John, I don't see it. I can't get behind this. You don't even, even with all of that, you still don't make your minimum requirement as far as a bank. I mean, if you've got a banker who's willing to go out on a limb for you and allow you one point two one as opposed to a one point two five, that's something, they're taking the risk, but the village is never gonna break even or it's gonna be a generation down the road before we ever do. On top of which, this doesn't even come close to fitting into the neighborhood. I understand what you want to do, I, I get it. I understand the benefit of density close to our downtown, I understand that as well. I, I think your computation as far as the spend and what sort of contribution to the local economy that this project will offer is, is a bit optimistic. However.
According to the Census Bureau and according to King County stats and everything, I'm actually at one-third of the number that they state.
Yeah.
So I'm actually very, very conservative on my projections here. That's why I wanted to bring that to the board, is that, that's on, that's taking only one-third of what all the government entities out there state is that.
I, I just, for me, you know, I, I just think that this is far too rich and just does not have the kind of financial protection that the village would need. Everything underground is on us and we've got nothing coming in. I mean, essentially, there's nothing. I mean, we're actually giving you money to, to bring this about.
There's also an eighty thousand dollar tax bill from day one that goes on forward, so.
Yeah, but we don't get that whole eighty grand.
No, no, I mean, you're gonna get twenty-five percent of that for the first seven years, so not only do you get the hundred grand back, but you get twenty-five percent of eighty thousand dollars in the other twenty for seven years, a hundred and forty. So you do get two hundred and forty back before it goes to a regular taxable situation from the TIF. So your recuperation of the three hundred is actually two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So with the sixty thousand dollars that remain, and I mean, even if you don't want to take any benefit to any business, that all these businesses are so content that they don't want any additional business, then we take the eight thousand, the eighty thousand times eight percent is sixty-four hundred dollars, it's ten years and the village is a hundred percent whole.
Okay.
So, the village does see daylight very quickly, in my opinion. I mean, quickly, real estate is a long-term play. Real estate isn't money today.
No, I understand that, I do, I understand that.
Why do we develop in TIFs? It's a long-term play.
And it's a, it's a very good point. It is, it absolutely is a long-term play and everything below grade is on us. And what's likely to happen before we ever recoup this investment in this idea is likely to hit us with regards to. is likely to hit us with regards to any maintenance that needs to be done. Phil, how many, how many water mains do we have in any given year? That's all us. We have to dig it, we have to fix it, it's on us. We don't have any tap-on fees that we could take to put in a reserve account for that rainy day that we know is coming. I mean, and for us not to plan ahead for it is pretty irresponsible. But you're right, it is a long-term game. But for the village, it's day one. The responsibility for everything below that pretty grass is on us. And so, and we have nothing upfront, which normally the tap-on fees provide, to combat that, to address that. We did the same thing at 811, John. We made the same mistake at 811, and we made the same mistake at 855. Bigger mistake at 855. I just could not believe the board did it twice. But we did it. $414,000 worth of tap-on fee waived. We have no money at all. I was assured, well, this is a, this is a negotiation point, and that's valid. I get that. What is the village going to do long before any of this money starts to come back in the form of either property taxes or excess TIP funds, before you're paid off, when something goes bad? That's what those tap-on fees provide. But here, we're talking about waiving it again. So we've already got the liability and the problems that 855 and 811 presented this village with no money in the bank to account for it. And now we want to triple down on this. I can't get behind this, John.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
When you were here in September, right?
Correct.
I'd originally asked for kind of a street perspective. Is that this rendering, like in the next image?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see right there.
Okay. I was hoping that there was a difference.
But what it is, is that, do the topography, you'll see that here's a roofline point, and it's following across here, and it hits this one mid-roof.
Yes.
And this property here, the peak of the roof is actually higher than this roof here. And then down here, same thing. But this is obviously as we're going downhill, 20, 24 feet. And both of these rooflines are approximately right at, I shot them with a laser, they're both at roughly 20 feet above grade.
Yeah, I, you know, I think I raised this in September. You know, asked about, can it be two floors instead of three? And I know that that idea was shot down, but I just, I don't know. Okay, I don't know. Thank you.
Well, that was one of my questions. Number two, another question I had was, if we were to move forward, this area would need to be rezoned, is that correct? Because this is a single family, or is this for multiple?
Single, this would probably be R4 perhaps. Joe, you probably might know, or Chris, would something with 24 units on this footprint be R4 or R5?
R4.
R4 at minimum? Okay. So yeah, it would require rezoning.
And what is it zoned right now?
Is it R1? Two?
R2. All right. The other question that I had was, on this, on this street-facing elevation too, and how it fits in with...
Anyway, I was just talking to Chris regards to what the tap fees are, Phil, what the tap fees are. And because we'd be using two 2-inch on the domestic side, the one 2-inch per building. So, you know, I'd be willing to discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, so then to finish my other point, thank you for getting that discussed. But if you can scroll down or scroll up to, thank you. So part of what my concern is, is how it fits in with the surrounding single-family residences. And so when you look at the elevation, where you're showing the fronts, which is basically in between those two buildings, it's very nice. And it somewhat fits in, is everyone okay? We forgot to remind her, you always remind me, that's a trip on the cord. It's, it's, it's very nice, and I feel like the aesthetics and the look fit in with the single families that surround it. However, when you're looking at these just gigantic three-story walls, that's my biggest concern, that it looks like a big monolithic wall instead of having some of the details that you might have seen on the elevations in between the two buildings.
As you can see on the front elevations, we have a timber look in the eaves of the, of the buildings themselves, right up in this area. You can also create this eave here, pull up a little bit further and create the same look there, too.
Yeah, there's a depth or some kind of a setback or something like that, so that, I mean, ideally, it'd be nice to have a door, but I was looking at your interior layouts. And just making an effort to have it wrap around at least cohesively onto the front from that center side, so that it's going to fit in a little bit better with the surrounding single families.
Anybody else?
I, I don't know. I just feel like 24 units in that, in that space is too much. I don't know. I don't, I don't see it fitting, fitting in. And I know we want high density there, but it just seems like too much density for that particular lot. I don't know. I suppose what your, your point of view is that you couldn't make the financials work with half as many units, is what you're saying.
Yeah. So we've been working on this property with staff for approximately a year, or longer than that. And that's what the staff was indicating to us, is that to get the density in there as well. We spent many hours coming up with concepts and everything on how to get the density in there. And then also, right now, the only thing that does work is that you have, the more units, the easier the project is to get it to work, you know, on a financial basis. So this is like a bare minimum unit count on that property that it could work. You know, but that's why you still see a lot of the large conglomerates going out there, re-filling 200 to 300 units at a time. Because that is a mass number that works very well financially. The small infills are a little more difficult.
What is the cost of, like, what is the infrastructure that's in the ground from the pump house? I can't remember what, is it a well that needs to be filled? And there's, or that's already been cleared out?
It has. I don't know what this structural integrity, to be able to build on it, I don't, where the cistern was filled.
The well was, the base of the well, it was approximately 20 feet deep. The base of that, the top 10 feet were knocked off, the concrete rim on that. And then the bottom of it was cracked, and then filled with 3-inch up to the 10-foot mark. And that is specification of the system, which I actually designed for a rebuilt structure, so that it could be rebuilt upon. And that's what has been done out there.
Okay, so it's already buildable, the land as it is? So why is it that it needs this many units? Like, why wouldn't a couple duplexes or single-family homes not be profitable for a builder to build and then start?
Well, it may be profitable, but the thing of it is, right now, a production home with vinyl siding, zero brick, box, and no gables, will run approximately $135 to $150 a square foot to build. So between the site development of bringing the water in, getting the drainage, the retaining walls, that's $80,000 in retaining costs. So even if the land is at zero, and you take, the site development on a person of this size is about $15 a square foot. That's storm, taking care of storm, taking care of your water connections and your sewer connections, and basic excavation. So $15 a square foot, this is approximately 3/4 of an acre. So you have 30 times 15, you have 450 to 500,000 just recycled elements on this property, plus $80,000 in retaining costs. We are now at $530,000 to get this property, put three houses on it, four houses on it. And then you take the cost of the house, 2,000 square foot houses, hard cost to build it, at a bare minimum is $270,000. So it's $530,000, divide that by three, for three homes. So you have approximately 70 from, $275,000 per watt. And now you're going to put 270,000. You have $440,000 in your 2,000 square foot box vinyl siding. And you're going to go sell that to who? Single families don't work there either. Nothing works on the site. That's why the mass has to get there, is because it's impossible to develop that property just in the site development phase for a single-family home, three of them, four of them. Doesn't make a difference. A 2,000 square foot box with zero gables, a 412 inch roof, vinyl windows, vinyl siding only, you're not going to sell it for over $550,000. Because any builder is going to want to make a minimum net profit 22%. And that's 22% based on the sale price, not a markup. That is a sale price 22%, which means it's $110,000. So they'd have to sell for $550,000. It's not going to happen.
Well, that would also...
It doesn't include permit fees.
Well, if, I mean, I think it could be done. Certainly, the more units, it's going to bring down the cost. That's just economics, I mean, I get that. But if, if, if somebody else were to approach the village with an idea that didn't have the same restrictions on cost of financing that you've described, that could definitely change things.
Well, I don't know. I look at it from a financial perspective. And a financial perspective, anybody who is an investor is going to want a return on their money. If I went and paid 100% cash for that, I'd be getting about 4.5% return. That's why you finance, is because you're putting only $1.15 million in there. You're carrying a note balance of approximately 4.3, $4.4 million. And then because I'm leveraging my 1.1 million with the note on the backside, that's why I'm able to achieve anywhere from an 8% to 12% return on my cash invested. If I paid cash 100% for that, the cash stream off that property, I get a 4%. Today's rate, I'll go buy a T-bond. I can get 4% tax-free all day long, instead of getting 4% on a 100%, $4.6 million investment, and then paying taxes on top of that 4%. So now I'm down to what? Boy, 2.5% return, I'm back to T-bills. Who's going to come and put that type of cash in here and get half the price of what they can get a return on by just a secure bond?
We don't know.
Nobody.
Well, we don't know that.
Yeah, we don't know that. There is somebody out there.
This was published.
But I also look at the response on the RFP, you know, which was...
Well, and that was flawed to begin with, but yes, I understand what you're saying. So Kathleen, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I mean, that's, there was an RFP that was published. And this was the only, this was the only response that we got back with a proposal. So...
Well, yes and no.
And, and, and I think, I'd like you to clarify why you feel it was flawed, because, you know...
I have two different developers, two different people who were interested in this property that approached me, that found it nearly impossible to find any information on the website concerning this. That was our failure.
I pulled the RFP off the website and just followed it. So I came to see how they did it.
And they don't use web browsers. Perhaps not. But where your comment that any builder who's going to want to do something to this scale is going to want a return of 22%.
Upon, that's a home builder, D.R. Horton.
Sure.
All those guys, Pulte, they don't do anything less than a 22% in that.
Right, and they're doing great expanses, and they're able to bring down their unit costs because of volume.
But that's why I'm referencing is a home builder.
Right. But at the same time, if you're coming in here and saying you're looking for anywhere from 8% to 12%, you know, what I...
8% to 12% return, ROI, cash on cash, and then about 18, 19 on a simple IRR. So there's a significant difference between a home builder selling a product and making 22% profit off of the gross sale, and also an investment that you're getting a cash-on-cash ROI of 8% to 12%. Those are two different worlds.
Okay, and that's legitimate. But what I'm saying is that if your, your proposal here is to come in with those numbers, to come in at an ROI of 8% to 12%, we don't know as a group that there aren't others who would be willing to do the same thing and be able to do it with less density. I think this is going to really upset the surrounding community. Every one of the people who own homes around this are obviously going to have to be given registered notification that this is going to happen.
I think this is only to ensure.
Well, if it comes to...
Doesn't require certified me, although. But yes, notification.
Right. But with the disruption that that's likely to cause them, and I can't see how it couldn't, along with what the requests of the village are, it's, it's, John, it's too much of a shoestring budget here, man. There's no guarantee. And if you're talking about, you needing the loan, you need the waivers, you need the land, you need 75% of the TIP, just to be able to come out right underneath what the minimum requirement is for a bank to provide financing, man, that doesn't exactly give me a warm fuzzy.
It's a skinny deal.
Luckily, we have the financials.
I'm going to interject for a second here. So let's just sort of zoom out. We're getting a little bit into the weeds. What we have here is a village-owned property that this village board has to decide what you want to do with it. We issued an RFP that was available to the public. We got one response. If you want to move forward with this response, staff will negotiate, which means everything that he asked for, he may not get. We will negotiate something that we think would be something that made sense, and we would require him to submit a pro forma that proves that the assistance that he would be requesting would be necessary in order for the project to be viable. If this isn't the project that you want for the site, then that's fine, too. We have other options. You can choose not to move forward with this proposal.
Reissue the RFP, do that, too.
You can speak, I'm done speaking.
Well, all I'm saying is that if, if the, the response was as tepid as it has been, then I think it's, it's really incumbent upon this board to make sure that the notices are out there, that, you know, we shout a little louder that this is available. Just because only one responded, doesn't mean that there's only one available, is my point. And so I think it would behoove us to sit back, take a step back, and really digest this one.
Erica, as you were in the middle of speaking, could you finish your thought? I think I said what I, what I wanted to say. Now I lost my train of thought, so, okay.
I apologize. This is important.
I'm kind of tired of this whole, we need to reissue RFPs thing. It's out there, and I mean, this is now the second time we've discussed reissuing an RFP. It's like, it is there, just because people don't know how to click on the website, that's bad.
Yeah, but just want to, just because of public record, not to interject, it was also in the Daily Herald and DemandStar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All I'm saying is that it might be worthwhile to explore extending it. That's all I'm saying.
Is that an option, Erica? Can we just say another month on the RFP?
The RFP technically closed. So it'd be... Be reissued.
I understand that it was technically closed.
Yeah.
Is it possible to extend it?
I would have legal counsel weigh in on that.
So, yes, the RFP closed. Um, the only way to not pick the lowest responsible bidder, which we only have one in this instance, is by a two-thirds vote. But, um, the board should stay away from inviting bids after the RFP is closed unless you reissue a new RFP, because there could be some fairness issues there.
Yeah, that makes sense. But in our packet were two other individuals who expressed interest in this. They, of course, didn't get the RFP, I don't know if they heard about it, whatever, but they're there. So, I, I, I think it's...
How did they end up in the packet and then, like, they didn't, they should do the RFP so they knew about it?
And I'll just, I'll just go a little further, because there, there are some case law and some precedent. So if the RFP were to be reissued, and that this isn't the direction the board wants to go in, then I would suggest reissuing it with some caveats or, um, some different information this time, because you...
Such as?
Well, I, I mean, if, if it, for example, the board does not wanna see multifamily units there, then maybe, you know, limit that in the proposal.
Got it.
Um, just a thought.
But, but your point with regard to fairness...
Yeah, we, we, what you don't wanna, what you can't have, what you can't have is bidders coming late to the game, because now they have an unfair advantage over those that submitted timely bids, so we wanna be careful of that.
No, I, I'm not suggesting that we would, you know, tip the scale in any one particular favor, I don't wanna give anybody that impression. What I do, what, what I would like to see are other options. We've seen this one, and it, you know, it has its pluses, it has its minuses. I'm, I'm just curious as to what else could be out there. Now, I mean, if, if the stumbling block to getting to that point is reissuing the RFP, that doesn't seem to me to be all that complicated a procedure.
Well, I think what we need to look at to Kelly's point, sorry, I can never remember your last name, so I never call you attorney, um, is if this isn't what we want, what do we want? Um, and the kind, like, we need to, if we do issue a new RFP, it needs to have, it needs to be more...
Defined?
Thank you, there's the point.
Narrowly defined.
Narrowly defined RFP for what we're actually looking for.
And not to interrupt, but sometimes you see in our, our P's preferences will be given to imagination with green space or special attention to walkability, or whatever it is.
Right.
But, um, yeah, I just would stay away from issuing the exact same RFP.
Right, we need to think about what we really want here.
No, I get that, because just give us what we've already got, so...
Well, it'd be, no, it'd be unfair advantage.
I'm sorry?
What she's stating is that if you reissue the same RFP, it would be an unfair advantage to any subsequent bidders on the property.
Right, so, yeah, we, we would just, you know, change parameters or any of the variables.
And, and, and to be clear, that doesn't mean you wouldn't be invited to rebid?
Certainly not.
I know that, but I mean, I don't see, I've, uh, let's see, it's been a year. Chris, when did we start this, two, three years ago, actually?
It's been a long time.
So I've been working on this property for multiple years, intensely for one more year. So it's been three years, probably, definitely, that we've been playing around with it. Somebody wants to own it is a cash loss situation, if somebody wants to own it because they just feel good about owning something and they don't really care about what it generates, whatever, then they can have it. Because we have exhausted the utility and the financial aspect of this property, and this is the only thing that works. So, but I mean, there are people out there that I'm sure can throw tons of cash at anything and go, "I don't care if I ever see a penny of that cash again." I'm sure there are. Hopefully, they find you.
I'd really like to know what the homeowners around that would think, like, that's one of my biggest things. Like, that's what you'd be looking out your window, so I just would really like to know their opinions.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, I did send out letters before the PZHC to all surrounding property owners, inviting them to participate.
And, here, no responses.
No responses.
Yeah, and I, I did share photos just like over the weekend to see if it generated any response in the community. It did seem, uh, surprising how many people were not wanting that, like, in the middle of single family. Uh, I understand that it only makes financial sense with only so much financial incentive from the village. Like, if we did reissue it and we decided we do want something that's much lower impact, um, are there ways the village can add more TIF money or more incentives, knowing that, uh, it isn't financially viable to do, um, anything smaller than twenty-four units? Then how do we incentivize what we do want, if we do want something different?
Well, I, and that's a good point. Of course, we don't know until we talk to somebody who's willing to come in and tell us what they can do, or what they're willing to do.
But I mean, on the RFP, we did open it to, I think originally we were gonna just say multifamily, and we opened it to residential as well, or single family. Um, but if it was, if we are landing on wanting only single family or only no more than six units or whatever number, like, if that's a stipulation in the RFP, I think that'd be helpful to not spend some of this time putting together a proposal of something that we feel like the community's not gonna be happy with. So one idea of if we do a new RFP to really narrow it in on how many lots we'd like to see in there.
Be a little bit more, you know, uh, direct or, you know, clear about what it is we're hoping to see.
Well, I think we're open to either, but seeing how big that is and like seeing the visuals in that neighborhood, it does, it does have a, a large feel with the single family homes on either side.
May, may I interject one additional point? I, I hope I didn't convey the message that is your only option. There, there is the option that, um, Village Administrator Storley suggested, which is negotiating with this bidder for the development that you all want. So that's another option.
But it sounds like you're saying there is another option.
Or with the right incentives to make single family viable, would there be an option or not one that you're interested in?
I'd have to weigh all, yeah, weigh all aspects of it.
What, what she's saying is, if the board, based on the feedback we're receiving tonight, it, could we have a further conversation about other possibilities that might work, that could be tweaked to satisfy the feedback that you're hearing tonight?
Well, I'll say this, I'm looking at your other pictures inside of this, and these Kenwood, Ken, Kenilworth townhomes look very nice. You know? I don't know if you can transform into something like that.
Put six of them along?
Right.
So, the Kenilworth townhouses, uh, that was obviously within a TIF. Uh, it's primarily we would do all of our developments. And that product sold for, uh, I think some of the lower ones were in the four hundreds. So it was about a sixteen hundred square foot townhouse, and because they're in Villa Park, you know, which is closer in, for every ten minutes closer, you could add another sixty thousand dollars to the price tag for the same product that you get here. So, but because of that, but that, and, uh, it's very expensive to build, uh, but yet the, because of the location of it, it supported a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar sale price on that product.
I understand that, um, you know...
So make, it's, so what we're dealing with is different markets, you know, even if it's the same metro area, but the further out we go, the rents are less and/or the sale price of a piece of property is less. I mean, a house here for three hundred thousand dollars in Shopper is probably four hundred fifty, five hundred.
I think what I always envisioned was something like what Scott's point out, pointed out here, you know, a, a row of six or maybe eight, I don't know, perhaps six anyway, of townhomes, the, the parking for which would be behind those, um, and, uh, you know, I mean, it would, it would satisfy our desire for density, and I think it would probably be a lot more, uh, palatable for the surrounding homeowners.
Keep in mind the grade on that, twenty-four feet and a hundred and fifty feet. So those townhouses, you know, literally would be...
Well, you could churn them, the same way you're churning this apartment building, to go that way with like an alley between.
Right, but then you still have all the retaining walls. That's why you have, literally, there's eighty thousand dollars I have to put in retaining walls to step up.
You know, I, I do wanna say, I feel for you, I, I understand you, you've done a lot of work here, and I, and I was even saying, I like the work that you guys do in town. I mean, I'm just not, you know, us trying to make things hard for you, it really isn't. It's just us, I think, trying to find a solution that works not only for us and not only you, but also for our neighbors. And I think that what we're hearing from our neighbors is that if we go ahead with a plan for twenty-four units, that nobody's, nobody's gonna be happy.
So I, I think, you know, we're, we still have a budget discussion to have tonight, and we're getting up on eight o'clock, so, um, maybe at this point, just straw poll, do you want to reissue the RFP, or do you want me to talk with this developer who has responded to the RFP and see if there's any, any other options we could negotiate, uh, that might be more palatable?
Or, you know, Kim, Kim, I, I'm asking, the other two people that submitted interest, can, can whatever it is that they had in mind be considered?
That's what I just said.
Well, it's just reissuing it, okay, then...
I say continue the conversation based on the feedback tonight and see if you can come up with something that works all around. To, to negotiate?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's up to you, but yeah, I think that we would all appreciate that.
Okay.
Always willing to listen.
Okay.
So then do we have to vote on that?
No, it's just direction, so...
No vote.
Alright, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. That'll take us to F, which is a discussion of elements that should be incorporated into the request for proposals for the Village Own Depot located at three nineteen North River Street. Erica, do you wanna run with this one?
He's actually looking for a stone drive.
I think he found it. Alright, so, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the future usage of the depot, given that there's changes occurring with the current, uh, setup. So, as you may have noticed, we've been asking for feedback from the public on the back of the cards that we've been issuing about, um, you know, what you wanna see there, what, what does the community think would be a nice addition? But we also have, you know, the question to resolve of what is, actually, I'm sorry, it wasn't that card.
No.
We're looking at other cards. It was on the Motor Monday card, right? Is that right?
Do you see the same one now?
Yeah.
Do you have a depot card?
The one that they handed out at the parade. So we've already received some feedback, so people are seeing the message and providing feedback, which is great. Um, but really, what we're trying to achieve here is finding out, uh, is there another operator that might potentially want to operate the depot? Um, we have approval from the board through April thirtieth for the services of Phil, who is here tonight and operates, or, you know, opens the depot every day, uh, for visitors. So we have the RFP draft in the packet, and if there's any feedback, we'll incorporate it, and then we'll issue it and make sure that people can adequately find it on our website.
This would be for next season, I got this season coming up.
Correct.
Well, anybody, questions?
Franco, I think you...
Sorry, I think you mentioned at some point that there was kind of a, not a non-compete, but just something to not be a direct competition with our local, like, businesses, is that correct? Did I just completely miss that?
Yeah, it could be put into the final RFP.
I just...
Definitely open for that feedback, I don't think it's in that draft version, but we could put that in there.
I mean, I also could've just, like, passed it on my way to the budget stuff, sorry.
It could be part of the, uh, the evaluation criteria as well?
That's true, yeah, because that's, I don't necessarily want it to be absolutely can't be, but almost like I prefer not, not having a direct competitor to businesses that we already have.
That's not a problem.
You know? Maybe I'm the only one though, so don't...
No, I agree.
Okay. It's all other board, so...
Yes, it's maybe hard to define, like, if there's a, a beer event, it conflicts, or if there's like purchasing goods uh, that might conflict with retail, like, would it be like a decision that a board would make, whether or not it's a, a conflict?
The RFP would come before you guys.
So we'd have a chance to review, and that's, yeah.
Well, I would just caution the idea of, a lot, are you talking about a lot of bringing in a business to occupy this space?
I mean, if somebody wanted to do a Saturday event, a pop-up where they're selling things, but they're kind of community... Yes, but it, it could be considered if they're selling alcohol, or if they're sell, selling things that are sold in local shops, that it could be competition? So it's kind of a gray area?
I'm not sure I want it to be an alcohol, like a bar.
I don't think it's big enough, to be honest.
Yeah, like an alcohol vendor, I don't...
And this, this isn't, this isn't, this is meant for the interior of the building, um, specifically.
Okay, not for the events.
Right, not the events.
Not pop-up events or individual events, which then they would need to account for.
More of the long-term manager.
Long-term, what are we doing inside the building?
Usage of the, the rooms inside the building.
Gotcha.
Still have it be, um, considered a, um...
Open to the public?
Right, I mean, a, a community building, I guess, a visitor center, that's what I'm saying. You know, I mean, it occupies that role now, or provides that. Um, we, I guess we would have to ask ourselves, do we wanna have a, keep that same complexion or change it completely, you know? But if we do, we have to be careful, I think, of, you know, do we wanna be the landlords on a piece of property that I would...
No, I've already said that three thousand times.
Right. I would have some questions to ask on that idea.
But at the, yeah, the same time, you know, if we've got somebody who wants to go in there and kind of, you know... Uh, yeah.
So, so one of the things as far as the whole visitor center thing that I find problematic or room for improvement is that it's only open, you know, twenty hours a week.
Right.
So there's, there's people that are in that park all the time. So I think with, and, and we've been to Erica and Andy and Franco, and, and we've been talking about, you know, since that started twenty-some years ago as a visitor center, and what we, where we are today, where everybody's got, you know, phones and QR codes and this, that, and everything else, I think there's a better opportunity to be able to serve as a visitor center with the information, either in a, in a kiosk or a TV screen that's underneath, so that that information is, can still be shared and people can find it because, um, and, and they can do it twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Um, as opposed to just the twenty hours a week during the time that, that it is open. And, and it, it's greater accessibility as well, 'cause who goes inside knowing what's, what's inside there, other than people that already know? So, so there's, there's ways that we're trying to a, address that, that are more in tune with the times and how people actually behave in looking for information now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I love the building, it, it's, you know, it's got a, a unique charm, it's, uh, located, you know, wonderfully in the center of the town, so I mean, it, it definitely has, uh, you know, character. And so I would love to see us come up with an idea that would allow expanded access to it by the public, you know, whatever use that takes. Uh, I don't know at this point, but I'd, uh, I'd certainly like to, um, grow the use of it, I guess, it's more, so...
So we're looking for direction right now on whether or not there needs to be any additional changes to the RFP so that we can put it out there. Again, we might come back with one bad idea, we might come back with seven good, great ideas to pick from, but in the end, we ultimately have the choice of determining what we wanna have go in there. Again, we might come back with one bad idea, we might come back with seven good, great ideas to pick from, but in the end, we ultimately have the choice of determining what we want to have go in there.
True, yeah, we have control.
So I guess my two things are, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to be a bar. I think we've got enough of those and I wouldn't want it to be, which I guess goes along with not a direct competitor for what we have, if possible. So maybe not a requirement of the RFP, but if possible.
Preference would be given.
Preference would be given too.
Alright, anybody else? No? Okay. So, hang on, can we give you something? Go on.
Nope, that's good to go.
Okay, good enough. So then, ah, one more discussion of proposed stub year twenty twenty-three budget. Brandis, you are up.
Wait, is this the budget workshop? Can I please have five minutes or like two minutes?
We, we can?
Please.
Smoking it together?
Do we need to do anything for it or just runway for a second?
Hey Phil, I wanted to ask you something. Do you remember that, that big limb that was behind Bontecce? He hasn't returned my call. I was just wondering, did you have that? So did he? I left him a message and said, either call me or call Phil. Just let us know if a comment came by. Did they take it down? They have it. Well, I sort of saw it. If it comes down, it's in their writing. Absolutely. It's a big enough limb that it's gonna, it can't not fit that much. And it's on the other property, so, but it's also, well, and the, the wires are right there, so this isn't something that you want to, I don't know. Does ComEd have like jurisdictional or truce that go through their wiring or their, or their weight or whatever? Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, would a homeowner be able to contract with another tree removal company that was that close to lines? Okay, they don't have to get comments or whatever? It's on them, if it's on them, then if they screw it, I mean, but the thing of it is, is that if they screw up, it's going to take out a thousand houses, you know, at least. Yeah, and like I said, I called John, I can't ask them, said, get back to me, and I never did. And I've seen them twice drive by my house. Well, I'll try again. I just want to make sure that he knows we, well, he knows we did, so, you know. A pro, because that limb is going to be done. Good enough, good enough, thanks. What you got, Bill? Okay, we'll keep that in mind.
Any additional days if I'm seven days, we can go for that.
Oh, you are? Okay, that's good.
And I have people who are working city. I would pay, you know, I would present my house.
Okay, easy. We would be able to expand access to the community for that building.
BMX season's starting. I can open it seven days. They wouldn't be volunteers. I would pay now from myself, the village would pay people for seven days, and we can expand.
You ever go to the, uh, the Camper Track, like Andre's Park or Raceway? Oh, really? I heard they were going to, I didn't know when that was, this year. I've never done, I've got to do it for science. Wait, you're talking about. Is the bill the BMX? Okay, yeah. And what day? It's the opening day?
Okay. Farm before then, lawn before then. Well, yeah, you know, right. Let people know, I mean, if it's summer hours.
Yeah, I gotta check it out. Even to watch it.
Nine, ten in the morning to, or nine in the morning, especially on weekends. People are out there long before ten in the morning until five o'clock.
Yeah.
On a Saturday, maybe noon to five on a Sunday, cause you know, figure it out. Nah, I would either play man. I don't want to either.
Oh, I figured I should introduce myself. We just moved in recently and the, the center is happening.
Oh, did you? Hi, why? Who are?
Henry.
Henry, nice to meet you.
We have three kids. And, uh, they've been awesome.
Yeah, the predators are wonderful people. Florence, yeah, she was a sweetheart. She passed away.
Thinking of that as her house.
Well, I, you know, she, she was a really, she was like, something like that, which she was, she was just like, she was a wonderful little lady. She was always walking up and down the street, I mean, I think some of her age, it was pretty impressive. She was everybody, it was like, she fell, broke a hip and that kind of took her out of her routine. And after that, it just, she took her, it was really sad scene, because Ken, um, he's a wonderful guy. Really, really.
What is the chance?
Very approachable.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 I want to write that. So Maggie's sister. Mary Kay, Melissa, Chris, Megan, they're sisters. And then they got two other sisters, both of whom live in East Duddy as well. One of them just moved in from Dartford, I think, because they're from somewhere. Well, I think there's three left. They were, I think, they weren't owned by the Seena family, Seena Brown, all of them from Dover.
Yeah, but they kind of didn't.
Sold off, and only developed the two. And Kurt, Kurt was just, he was like four or five years younger than me.
Did you get his name? We hear about the cord. Did you get his name? Cause I never got his name. No, I didn't get his name. It spoke the most.
Yeah, they got, and Kurt, yeah, and unfortunately Kurt owned them all.
Oh, I think I did write his name down then. I think I wrote down his name, Michael Becker. It was a little here, but not everyone.
If I'm not mistaken, it's owned by a lady who.
I think Kathy Vincent, it was an M.
One of them.
It was a Kathy Vincent.
One of those lots along with family.
But she spoke. Yeah, I'm saying I don't have half the name.
Where exactly? You can probably look it up on King County Tax.
Maybe I'll hear it better when I listen to the recording on the tape.
Property tax rules to it and get the owner and stuff, but yeah, it's a nice.
Brandis is ready to go. What?
Oh, the workshop. Ken was a big fisherman. They sold it to a little kid. Yeah.
I already shot, I already found it. I already found it. I can watch it.
Something, so.
I think you're fun, although you have some music and producer producing it though.
Well, I hope so. I don't think otherwise, yeah.
I didn't lie, know where you could go. More than his cloth.
Okay, we all back over here, so.
Did you have your.
Scott, you're back.
Fair.
No, he just came back.
There it is.
Budget workshop. You start growing things out, I mean, from there. Okay.
Hold on, Rich is.
Oh. I thought he was, I swear, I just looked over and he was there.
He'll be, he'll be trying this. Brandis, why don't you?
You want me to start?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? Rich can jump in.
Before Brandis starts, I'll give a short preview. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the stub year budget and as we've discussed in the past, we're converting to a calendar year budget for a myriad of reasons. Will make all of our lives exponentially easier and because of that, we have to have the stub year, which is basically May one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. So we're going to repeat this process all over again, which Brandis is very excited about in, in August, September. So we will have two budget processes this calendar year in preparation for what will be our first full year calendar year budget, which will be for January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. So in the preparation of this year's stub year budget, I've asked staff to hold back on any kind of requests that are outside of the fray of sort of normal business operations. And I've asked Brandis to prepare a budget that largely carries over eight months of operating and eight months of revenue. So it's a little bit tricky to, to estimate eight months of revenue because of when revenues come in. But it's pretty, it's, it's a little bit easier to estimate eight months of expenses because we just take a certain percentage of last year's expenses and we just carry them over. So as Brandis goes through this presentation, I just wanted to have that be in the forefront of your mind, that this is not an exact science to do a budget that's only for eight months. But we've, you know, Brandis and the team have done a, a pretty solid effort to try to craft this in a way that makes sense and that is comprehensive and that is fiscally responsible. So with that, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. As Erica stated, we are going through an eight-month period for this budget a year. We're going to call it a stub year budget. And for the purposes of this workshop, we will just go over our overall budget for the stub year, our general fund, which is where most of our department budgets are held, and our TIFs and BDDs. And then finally, we will look at our water and sewer funds. As you know, in twenty nineteen, the board adopted a procedure plan that goes through twenty twenty-four. And we tried to budget within the confines of the goals that were established at that time. So if you look at some of the documents that you received in your agenda packet, we try to match some of our expenditures, especially new expenditures and capital projects, to these goals. Overall, last, we are projecting our end of year for fiscal year twenty-three to have an overall increase of one hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that includes this year, the potential purchase of the Hager property, which is about eight hundred, eight hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand dollars. And for the stub year, because we do have some relatively high acquisition of property included, we plan to use some fund balances from our TIFs. And that has caused the overall net position change to decrease by two point six million, and we will go through some of those projects. Sure. First, we'll start with going over our debt. As you can see, the village had or started with about twenty-three million dollars of debt. These are mostly held or all held within our TIFs and our water and sewer fund. And right now, we are proposing or estimating that our end of year twenty twenty-three, both principal and interest, end at about eight point nine million dollars. So we've paid down quite a bit of our debt and these are just within our TIF funds. And then we'll look at this next slide, which is our water sewer and also the debt service that we owe to the East Dundee Fire District. And if you add all of that, that's an additional three point nine million dollars of outstanding principal and interest that will be owed through. Or that I project to be owed or left over at the end of the twenty-three stub year. So overall, we have about twelve point nine million dollars worth of debt. Please keep in mind that the water sewer fund, one of the loans that we have through I E P A, is paid in full through the West Dundee. And also a portion of one of the TIFs bonds is also paid through J D Buy Rider, and that was part of the agreement. So with those items deducted, we have about eleven point two million dollars worth of outstanding debt.
Which we did twenty fifteen G O bond on the previous page. That's almost another million dollar reduction in total, so that's good news. That's next year, by the way.
Yes, I have the maturity dates too included on these slides, so you can see when we estimate that those fall off.
What year was the fire protection district loan taken? It's got the maturity, but.
That was when River Haven went in place and that would have been somewhere around twenty twelve, maybe? Something like that? When we, when we built that.
Yes, it's about a twenty year, it's a twenty year. So for this fiscal, or stub year rather, sorry, we are projecting a, a zero-based budget and it is balanced. We do have a small surplus of sixty-nine thousand dollars that we are anticipating based on revenues and expenditures for the year, or stub year. And then we'll go through some of those changes, but as Erica previously stated, we do anticipate keeping our general fund expenditures relatively low and the same as we have been throughout this current fiscal year. As an overview, we'll talk through some of our TIF and BDD commitments. We've already discussed some of our debt. And we will talk about our two point eight million dollars in proposed budget expenditures for our capital projects, some deferred projects, and also our contingents. So this is an overview of where our revenues come from. About forty-five percent of our total revenues come from our general fund, thirty-two percent from our TIFs, and then seventeen percent from water and sewer, and you can see that the rest are kind of broken out accordingly. So just a quick overview, we do have several projects planned in our capital projects. A lot of that has been discussed in a memo that was attached to our budget, but we do have one public works vehicle that we do intend to purchase. A new trailer and an aerial lift, and if you guys have any questions, Phil can kind of go through some of that. We do plan to complete the maintenance and renovation of the village hall. Hopefully, a lot of that will be completed within this current fiscal year. But there will be some outstanding items to complete next sub-year. We have about a ten-year, six to ten-year lease on our Starcom radios that we play, pay out every year, and that's about sixteen to twenty thousand dollars. This year, we do intend to implement the body cameras. This year, we do intend to implement the body cameras for our police department, and that is state mandated to be implemented by 2025. And there are several purchases of property, one of which is to North Van Buren, the other is for North Van Buren, the Hager Pottery parking lot, and also the lumberyard. Now, some of this may take place within this current fiscal year, depending on when we can get everything settled. But I do have them also budgeted in next year's, just in case. And those are some of the major projects and property acquisitions that are causing our decrease in our fund balances within our TIF fund. There are four road resurfacing projects, and we'll talk about those later. And we also include every year $25,000 for road patching. We did start our Fox River beautification study this fiscal year. We intend to continue that process for next year and maybe even start some projects, but we'll see. So, we did budget for that as well. And prior to this discussion, I did have an epoxy moss treatment. So, that will probably or may be removed. There is a potential to improve the depot restrooms in the depot center. And that has been included as well. And there is the water main installation, as well as some other software and equipment upgrades for our water and sewer department. Any questions?
Well, a couple of quick ones. Can you just give us a quick idea, zero-based budget? What you mean by that is you're just keeping a zero fund balance?
It just means that the revenues and expenditures will offset each other.
They need to. That's just good accounting. The other question on this was body cams in chief. This might be in yours. We had purchased body cams a while ago. From what I understand, they're sitting on a shelf collecting dust. And I'm wondering if there's any value to those. Are you familiar with it?
No, they're all obsolete. And this would be, they're a completely different system and different program they have now. And I've also received one grant from our insurance carrier and waiting out a federal grant.
Okay. So, you suppose there's any unassuming municipality we can pawn them off on?
No.
Now, the water mains, then. Phil, does that water main installation capital improvement include the one that's on Water Street? That's on the consent agenda?
That is.
That's part of it? Oh, it is. It is what it is. Okay, got it. Thank you. That's that connecting the loop from the deadline that's up at West Michigan? Or is it, I can't remember.
It will connect the water main that essentially is a water main railroad and water. It'll connect that up to North and Water.
North and Water, okay.
Several block stretch.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, we'll talk through our general fund. Most of our general fund revenue is received through our sales tax revenue. And for this current fiscal year, projected end of year, we did see a significant increase in our home rule and regular sales tax, which is great. We did have several major permits that happened this year. And Chris can talk through some of those if you guys have any questions. But we had one significant one from Powell Land. And we did receive the second half of our grant, or pandemic funding from the state of Illinois for $218,000. As you know, last, or this current fiscal year, we did introduce two new revenue sources, which is our streaming and truck parking tax. And we kind of went through those last year. But we did see a significant increase in our streaming tax than what we initially projected. Truck parking, we talked through. We'll do some more studying on that, but that was significantly lower than we anticipated. But for.
You said it was lower than anticipated?
Yeah.
For the truck tax?
Yes. So, we are projecting current end-of-year revenues for our general fund at 8.1 million. And then, because we're only budgeting for eight months, we anticipate the stub year revenues to be about $5.6 million. Any questions? And this is a breakdown of where we get most of our sales tax from. As you can see, a little over 50% is attributed to our sales tax. We get 13% from our real estate tax, but that all goes to our police fund or police contribution to their pension. And then the rest are kind of broken out, the utilities and other revenues that you can see. So, we'll just get into our expenditures. For this stub year, we are proposing to only provide cost increases for personnel for our union employees according to our contract. Non-union employees will receive cost of living increases, as well as merit increases on our January 1 budget. We did have a minor increase in our police pension contribution from the current year. And we do have proposed to just start some of our computer replacement, to start a program because we are a little dated there. So, we do have two to three computer purchases included in this stub year for each department. And probably will continue that cycle every year as we go forward. Any questions? And this is just a breakdown per category. As you can see, where we spend majority of our money within the general fund per department. As you can see, our police department is our biggest expense. And they have the most personnel, so that makes sense. But most of our expenditures for the stub year is relatively low, obviously, because it's eight months. But about 50% of our finance and public works personnel, our salaries and insurance and other benefit costs are split between the general fund and also water sewer. And then 30% of our village administrator's salary is also included in our water and sewer fund.
Is there any reason for charging the water and sewer fund? I mean, is it, as opposed to all general fund? I mean, does it kind of ease some of the pain?
And also because a lot of our work, especially in water sewer, public works and then in finances, half of it is within the water sewer, just taking payments, especially for finance, processing utility bills, that's half of our jobs. And then, public works, I mean, half of what they do is in water sewer. Just to kind of spread out the work and make sure the salaries are added or counted where we're spending our time.
I'm just wondering if it's going to provide an accurate condition of the fund, given our efforts to become fully user-funded with water? You know, and I mean, from user fees, in other words. So.
I would think that personnel costs would be a part of that user fee is, you know, it's where we spend our time.
Are we, yeah, I didn't think we were going to be until 2033. I mean, with the current progression of rates, it was going to take to about 2030 or 2033. I can't remember what Trotter told us.
I think it's 2033.
Yeah, that we'd be fully funded, but we're going to have a rate that's through the roof.
Yeah, we'll have to, for sure, do another study.
All right.
I'll just add one thing there. So, the water fund is healthy, the water and sewer fund. It creates, it generates enough revenue to offset the expenses at a rate that is reasonable. But you all understand that we have outsized needs as it relates to water main infrastructure improvement. So, you know, if we were to take into account what we should be doing versus what we're actually doing, then there would be a disconnect in terms of, is that revenue generating enough fund balance to adequately address the issues or the infrastructure that we may like to address? There's always going to be a limit to how much we can do year to year because we just don't have the staff to address it. And so, sometimes we augment that with, you know, contractual labor, et cetera. But overall, we also need to balance having the rate be affordable to our residents. So, there is some water infrastructure included in this year's budget that we're taking from the BDD fund, which makes a lot of sense because it is a, an infrastructure improvement that benefits the BDD area. And so, where possible, we try to find other ways to supplement user fees so that we are not solely putting the onus on residents while we try to build that fund balance up so that we can adequately address the infrastructure needs in the community. Thank you, Branda.
Has there been any pushback from the businesses within the BDD to that logic? Using the BDD to subsidize, I don't want to say subsidize, but at least support the water fund and the water efforts? I mean, I'm thinking that, you know, I got a business in the BDD. I'm, you know, asked to charge an extra point or half a point anyway on sales tax, making it more difficult for me to sell a car, for instance. But you're going to beautify the area. And I know that early on, when we put the BDD in, that was the expectation. So, I don't know if anybody's questioned that or not.
That's a proposal that we put forward in this budget, is to fund it from that source. If the village board thinks that we should use that money for other purposes, we can certainly do that. But insofar as feedback I've received, because this is only a new proposal, I haven't received any feedback. But, you know, the majority of those funds that are collected do go to efforts to beautify. And there's other amenities in the community that you could switch around to, say, if you wanted to say, you know, the depot bathrooms. That's a valid BDD expense that everybody benefits from in that BDD area. So, if we wanted to fund that from BDD instead of capital, we could do that. So, there's, these are all, you know, decisions for you guys to chew on and give me feedback on. And we can move things around if it makes more sense. But, you know, generally, we're trying to keep things affordable while addressing issues. And how we go about that is, you know, for you all to decide.
It's a balancing act. Thank you.
Okay, so, as we discussed, the stub year budget will only propose increases for our union employees. And we have about 3% regular cost of living come May 1, as well as 3% step increases for our officers and public works union employees. We do have one vacant public works position we are seeking to fill right now. Hopefully, we'll see what happens. Insurance costs this year are relatively low. See about, between a 2% to 6% increase between the different offerings that we have for dental, medical, and as well as vision. And this is just a kind of a breakdown per department, as well as per category of where we are within our general fund. As you can see, personnel is about 60%, I can't see that well. And then, the rest is broken out between some of our other categories, but are relatively low. And our department breakout is, as you can see, about 60% to police and 14% to public works, 12% to administration, and then the rest accordingly. So, we just kind of broke out some of our changes to our general fund. And this year, we have for police, obviously, we do our police pension contribution. That increased just a little bit this year. And then, again, as we talked about before, we do plan to replace some of the computers in the police department, as well as starting to replace the tablets or laptops that are currently in the squad cars. There was, last, this current fiscal year, we did begin our list with enterprise for our police vehicles. And that was in our capital fund budget. So, we are going to move that to our general fund budget. And that's a $68,000 increase, since it will be a routine, regular expense now.
Were we still going to think about also doing that with public works? Or is that thought kind of expired?
Looked into it, I think, at this point, because of the diversity of our fleet and the varying levels of use and specialized attachments. I don't know that it would be applicable across the board in public works. We may have a couple of vehicles that might benefit from that program. But I think, generally speaking, I don't see how it would benefit our impact for that stuff.
We are proposing to defer the water additional contribution amount for $338,000 to the police pension fund. And we can talk a little bit later about how we propose to, let's see, how we propose to meet their recommended contribution amount for the stub year. A little bit later, we'll talk about that. Again, for public works, we do have, and that we will increase or provide salary adjustments for our union employees. And we do plan to fill that one vacant position. These are our community events and a breakdown of how we plan to fund each event, as well as the total event budget. And there's a little bit more for ancillary or miscellaneous expenses included in the general fund budget. Any questions?
I do wonder, I mean, this Reef Across America presentation, is going to come back? Would that count as a community event budget item or?
I think that would be a board decision. Can make adjustments. And again, there's a little bit extra in the budget to accommodate some extra expenses if we need to. So, we'll go into our TIF and BDD budget now. There are no more questions about the general fund. So, we are proposing in our BDD for the downtown Dundee BDD to have three 50/50 facade grants for our commercial properties.
How many did we give out last year? Was it three?
Four.
Four?
And we, again, will propose a depot complex improvement, which is the bath or restroom renovation. We are still waiting on a dollar amount for that, but hope to have that this week. And we discussed already the water main projects, railroad and North Street. And that is also funded currently in our BDD, as well as property acquisitions for Hager Pottery, the lumberyard, as well as to North Van Buren.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, this is the second time I've seen the Hager Pottery parking lot mentioned, but not the property.
It's that little one.
So, we have budgeted, or we are, we are hoping, fingers crossed, to close on the Hager property in April, which would be current year.
Understood.
So, we'll be coming back with a budget amendment because we didn't budget for that in the previous year. So, we'll be coming back with a budget amendment to apply that expense to current year, assuming we close in April. But the Hager parking part, you know what I mean? It's that little parcel that was not part of a larger sale that is still owned by the Hager owner. So, that one.
You got what I was inferring, which is where's the big building?
Where's the big expense?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I also had another question. Go ahead. We'd also discussed about doing some 50/50 grants for residential, facade grants, at one point. And I don't know if that is something that anyone else. We had done it in years past, what, three, four years ago? And I know there's been some interest, especially with some of the properties in the downtown area because the painting is so expensive to do on some of these older, grander houses. It's expensive and that a lot, but...
Yeah, we did not include that in the budget this year, but we certainly can revive that program. It wouldn't be too difficult because it was a previous program. We just have to allocate the funding. If the board wanted to proceed with that, it would be helpful if you just gave us sort of a dollar amount that you were thinking.
Can I ask what the dollar amount is for the commercial side?
Twenty-five thousand.
Each?
Each.
Okay, so seventy-five or, well, three cents, I mean, okay.
I wonder if it's something we, I mean, we should maybe think about it for this year, like on a small scale?
Yeah, and then we can roll it out.
And then we can roll, I mean, we can look at really doing it, you know, for the next fiscal year.
Like two...
In six months.
Two grants at ten or fifteen thousand dollars. As just a number I'm throwing out there, just to kind of get reaction and consent or conversation.
Each, each a total.
I think for residential, I mean, I think that you could probably, fewer less than that even.
Yeah.
And get more of them, you mean?
Yeah, like maybe four for five each.
Right.
Remember it's 50/50, so that's a $10,000 project, so you want to get in half of it.
Too much to spend, how to crack a Canadian house.
Do a fair amount of things.
It's not dense.
Yeah.
I mean, it would, anything would help, right?
Yeah.
Be interested in that and I'd be interested in knowing like current, I mean, I know rates are ridiculous for that, so it's almost like what does it cost to a side house right now? Or repaint or redo? And, you know, I don't want to fund somebody's entirety, like entire remodel, but, you know, some of it, you know, being able to support our residents a little bit on, on next year, their improvements is required.
So just for instance, there is, one of the residents that I spoke to about this lives up on Hill Street in one of the bigger Victorian gingerbread places and they knew they needed to do some major work because they just bought the house and it had to be, it had to get done. And they were looking at a $50,000 painting job and replacement of, you know, bad wood and siding and trim and that kind of thing, so...
I just had siding put on my house so I could tell you what it cost.
How much?
A lot.
Right?
And it's not a big house either, it's twenty-seven.
So, so, yeah.
Twenty-seven grand, I know it's, it's just a nineteen-hundred square foot house.
The other thing is, we have had this program in the past, so it would be interesting to see what we've done in the past. Yeah, we can talk over with staff, come up with some suggestions and then bring it back for you at our next meeting.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Again, these are some future redevelopment, development projects we've already talked about. And one that we haven't really talked about is the downtown parking lot, which is something that, or parking garage structure, but that's just in addition to some of the other properties that we've already talked about tonight with development.
So it's in the budgets for this year or for a stub year?
No, not the parking lot, but these are just outliers.
That's true.
Yes. All right, any other questions about the TIF funds, BDDs? We'll talk about water and sewer and then we'll be done, almost. So I'll go through some of these if you have specific questions. I'll step aside and have Phil come speak to them. But we do have budget inflow and infiltration study as well as a water distribution system evaluation. There are some SCADA upgrades as well as the purchase of Hill Street lift station grinder, purchase of a pump for the Prairie Lakes Lift Station or replacement, and a purchase of a dry weather pump. And then we also included a $50,000 contingency, which is also included in the general fund. So we have a hundred thousand dollar contingency between the two funds.
Phil, didn't we just replace that grinder and pump on Hill Street, the lift station? Joe, do you remember?
We upgraded one of the pumps there, but the grinder head of the lift station has worn out, so we're looking to replace.
The grinder, is that for I and I or?
No, what it essentially does, it grinds up any solids, larger degree rags and whatnot that comes in from the sanitary system and it breaks it up before passing into or passing through the lift station itself.
Okay.
So the water distribution system evaluation, is that to address some of the rusty water, water condition issues or?
To look at our distribution system village-wide, including the age of our pipes, our system, to evaluate our system as a whole.
Who would be doing that? Who would be doing that?
We have a proposal from Action Women to do that. They have an extensive water division group that has experience in this.
So then you could see from the outcome of that, you know, what are the potential big ticket items and then how we prioritize those, you know, in the coming years?
For water being improvement projects, we do have a number of areas where we've had multiple water break rates in recent years and so we want to target those areas and see what type of improvements can we make to prevent future main breaks. They have low pressure, high pressure zones within our distributed system because of the elevation change here versus to our east.
Up there.
Yeah, so there's some complexities and interested to see kind of what their, this particular study shows for our systems.
Okay.
All right, so finally we'll talk about our cash balance policy. It's pretty much the same as the last couple of years.
If this is finally, I don't remember, did we talk about streets at all?
I, you know, I didn't go into much detail, but we do have four streets that we are planning to surface. Phil, I don't know if you want to go into those.
Sure. The four streets are Bell Morale Drive, which from 25 kind of around then to Scott Drive, we have the entire length of Reese from end to end, Hilton, and then Blant essentially between Hilton and King.
And these are complete resurfaces?
Correct, yes.
And what are, what are we budgeting for that, for those four projects?
About five and a half, six.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
So our cash balance policy, we always recommend at least a 25% reserve as well as 10% cash flow, so we have about a 35% reserve in both our general fund as well as our water sewer fund. We are also proposing that at the end of, toward the end of each year, that we take a portion of our surplus and add that to whatever budgeted contribution is for our police pension. This year, we do have a pretty good surplus that we are anticipating, so we do have and that we will make an additional $328,000 or $29,000 contribution to our police pension fund and that we will also transfer about 50% of that surplus into our capital projects fund so that we can continue to fund some of our major projects going forward. And that amount is about $650,000. These numbers will change as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, but that's our proposal for the current fiscal year. Because we don't have much of a surplus anticipated for the stub year, I don't have any projected numbers for what we may see as a surplus that could go into our police pension contribution or capital projects fund. But the goal for the stub year would be to continue the process is to add more funding to our police pension and also to fund a little bit more or build a reserve in our capital projects fund.
So is that 650,000 in the, in the capital project that is reserved fund, that is not put into any budget items right now, that's?
No, that's just what we propose to transfer from the general fund instead of capital fund.
Right. And the 328 in the police pension contribution, that's to go against the 338 lot of our name and says we're short?
This year would be the 328,000, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, because we have shortfall, what we put in, what they suggested of 338?
So that's the difference.
That's where, it's kind of, okay, so we're going to come up with that, good. Great.
So, yeah, I was going to add on to this conversation, so the last meeting you had brought up, let's talk about where we can find some, you know, more money to put towards the police pension fund. And basically, we're in a good position right now. We're projecting to end the year with surplus, so great. So we didn't budget for that full payment, so now we're saying, let's make the full payment, put in the extra 328,000, which leaves the 650 that we would then have available to then put into the capital fund. Could you take that 650 and put it all towards the pension? Yes, you could, but...
It's more than that.
Exactly. The capital fund, as you know, like we're not taking any debt to do any capital projects, like we're paying as we go to do our capital projects, which is great because as we talked about earlier in the slide, we are doing collectively a very good job of paying down that debt and putting ourselves in a position that if something comes up at some point, we have the ability to borrow without sort of overburdening ourselves. And looking at stub year budget, I'd like to be able to budget for the full payment of the pension, but I don't see where we can find a little extra cushion to put towards it. So we've done the same thing we did the current year, which is only budget for that smaller payment and then if we find in November that our projections for year end look good, then we'll come back and do the same thing we're doing now and say, hey, we have the ability to make that extra payment, let's go ahead and make it. But what we want to get to and what I think we can get to is when we budget for calendar year 24, we're budgeting for that full payment and once Prairie Lakes TIF comes offline, which ends at the end of this year, and we get our last increment in 24, when that, when we start to budget for 25, we'll be able to capture the entire increment. And that is what I would suggest, we take that entire increment and put it towards the police pension fund. So that will be sort of a long-term plan to get to the point where we're fully budgeting for the higher recommended amount versus the minimum recommended amount. But while, while we're in the midst of what I, what I call you have to spend money to make money, we're purchasing a lot of properties this year and so the priority is to try to invest in the priorities that you've discussed and get those things in a position where they can then create revenue for, for the village. And so at this point in time, while we're in that space of investing, I don't have a mechanism to put any additional money towards the pension. However, I still think that that's a worthwhile, worthwhile thing. And as we look at, you know, there has, there is not a single revenue enhancement in this budget. There's no new taxes, no new fees, no new, no increase in fees, nothing. It's just sort of a rollover. As we look towards calendar year 24, we will be coming to you with some suggestions. Most likely one of those would be an increase in the parking tax because when we implemented that, it was a, we're not sure. We know that there's a delicate balance between making a new tax that generates revenue for the village and offers us the ability to invest that tax into repairing those roads and, you know, sort of offsetting the impact that some of these businesses have on the community. But then there's also, you don't want to tax too much so that people, you know, negatively affects their business. We haven't seen any business negatively affected by the parking tax and I would argue that, you know, the state of Illinois taxes at 11%, we're somewhere in the 5% range. So there's, there's quite a lot of room if we want to consider increasing that parking tax for next year, which I will be recommending. So there's going to be some revenue ideas that we'll bring forward for calendar year, but for, for right now, I think this budget as it's presented is pretty, pretty straightforward and encapsulates everything that the board has decided are its priorities and will benefit the community fairly greatly in what's only going to happen over eight months. So it's kind of my spiel on pension funding.
That's fair. The other thing though is our, I mean, we're going to have to renew or however it is that we do it with our garbage refuse $20 surcharge again. And again, before your time, this was proposed to the residents as a temporary thing. What's that?
I think we voted at one time to sunset.
Well, it's sunset every year. That's why we have to do it again this year and we'll have to do it again next year and we'll have to continue doing it every year unless we, you know, propose it to the residents, I guess, as this is just a fee for collecting garbage or I think we should work on phasing that up. I mean, one or the other. I think we should, we should have a real conversation about being honest with the residents or, you know, I know last year we, we talked about maybe offsetting the increase in water fees with the decrease in that, you know, that fee. I don't know, you know, I know that we all want to have a robust fund and all that, but, you know, I, I just feel like it's, it's something that we should really talk about and really talk to our residents about because there's still people that think that that's a temporary fee and that someday that's going to go away, based on what we told them.
Yeah, it was Walmart that did us in on that. When we were able to provide for garbage while Walmart was still in East Dundee, we were bringing in about 850,000 a year in taxes to the village. When we lost that, that hit hard, so we had to pass some of that cost on. We've since made up for half of it through thorns, but still we're, we're kind of in the red on that, but yeah, we'll have to, that'll come up.
Yes, I, I agree with Scott though. It either needs to actually be sunsetted or it needs to be an honest conversation. We can't keep saying, it's still temporary. Like if it, it's not, 10 years is not a temporary thing, right? Like we, like even, even five years is not a temporary thing, so we need to stop kicking it at some point.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, I, I know the appearance of it and I don't want to justify it or anything, but what we used to do was we paid for it. Now that same amount of cost is, it's still on the resident the way it always was, they're just now cutting a check for it. So it would appear as though it's an increase in the tax when essentially it was coming out of the general fund, but it was in deference to anything else that we would have spent otherwise. So either way...
This is true.
The resident pays for it.
So it's the whole home rule, you know, becoming a home rule community, part of the selling point of that was that we wouldn't have to pay for garbage.
Right.
I mean, that was literally how it was sold to the residents, so it was. So we'll have to look at that, truth and advertising.
We can certainly add that to the conversation pieces for, let me talk about the calendar year 24 budget unless...
That's fine. I mean, that's what we said last year.
So we could talk...
And I'm not trying to like give you all time, I'm just saying.
No, I hear you, I hear you. So we can, we can talk about it now, we can talk about it at our next meeting. But one of, one of the things that I would recommend is, it's, dollar for dollar, you're going to get a higher return on your investment by investing in the pension fund than by not charging for refuse. So if there's, if there's a thought that we want to eliminate that fee, then we need to come up with some kind of revenue that's going to pay for it.
Awesome.
And right now, I'm, I'm not sure where we're going to find that revenue or what kind of new tax or we can create or what kind of other fee we can increase, but the money's got to come from somewhere. And with our pension being not funded at an adequate level, that's, every, every available dollar that we have going forward, I would always recommend that we put towards that because over time, that will continue to grow at a much steeper angle than anything else that you may, you know, want to put that money towards. So while I understand that in the past, there was a belief about how that was going to transpire... So while I understand that in the past, there was, um, a belief about how that was going to transpire, I agree, we should make a decision on whether or not it's going to be permanent or not. Um, and if it's not going to be permanent, come up with some kind of revenue stream to fund it.
Can I, uh, make a question or suggestion or however you want to take it? We did just have a conversation about reinstituting a program, the facade, for the residential facade. Can we look at balancing that with the garbage, like, and saying, okay, we're going to punt that for one more year because it is something that's not here now, it is something we want to do in the future, but we'll do it when we have a full fiscal year that we're looking at? And instead look at ways that we can not cut the garbage, but start reducing it?
Subsidizing.
So, like, you know, we have, we're, we're taking this, we're going to put it off to another fiscal year until it's really had the whole thing. Can we start looking at ways to use what we were just talking about and thinking about with that? And, you know, start reducing it, not eliminating it yet, but what would that look like, you know, I don't want to.
Good thought process, but they're not comparable dollar bills.
Right.
You know, I mean, we're talking about thirty grand and three hundred.
Yeah.
So it's.
You get a one percent discount.
Yeah. Right, you know, like, what, what's going to be meaningful? You know, what steps can we take and how can it, the step, the initial steps be meaningful?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I was not sure where we were going to find the funding for the residential program, but I was going to see, check with our village council and if, if something that could be funded from the BDD, if, if the homes were in the project area or in the BDD area. Um, so I'll have to discuss that and see, um, but I would, my first choice would be to use restricted funds for that versus unrestricted funds. And right now what we're looking at is trying to find unrestricted funds. So, you know, we can, we can bat some ideas around the staff and see if there's any, any places where we might find a little wiggle room, but, um, I hear the feedback and we'll figure, figure out if we have any ways to.
Thank you.
Take a stab at it.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, our ability to go to a stub year on this, was that tied to home rule at all? I mean, can any municipality do this? Or, and then do we have to have, uh, the county's approval on this?
No, you can do it.
Yeah, we did, okay.
It's not common, but it happens.
Yeah, all right.
Any other question?
Um, this is just kind of a breakdown of what we already talked about with the cash balance policy. And, um, I just made a, I guess, a consensus, which is, I guess, your next agenda item, um, to prove the policy as discussed. Any other questions?
I'm ready now.
Okay, so we will have the budget hearing at our next meeting and we will incorporate some suggestions in the budget based on the feedback and then if there's, um, nothing else, then I think we have what we need to prepare for that.
Cool. All right.
Thanks, Brandis.
Thank you. Then we have, uh, thanks, Brandis, one more item, H, if we could have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter thirty four of the Village of East Dundee Village Code regarding the cash balance policy for the current fiscal year twenty three FY two, sorry.
Second. We've just had our explanation of it, so are there any questions concerning that? No? Kathy?
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triver?
Yes.
Trusty Sauter?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
And Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to reports, let's start with Andy, what you got?
Um, let's see, I was wondering if there's any updates on, uh, the AT&T parking lot that we were looking into?
My favorite topic.
People were asking about it, so.
Um, so we have made the request from AT&T to purchase it and we have not heard anything back yet. So we will continue to call them, email them, show up on them. So they have been very responsive in letting us use it for all of our village events. And, you know, that's been great, but the ultimate goal is for us to acquire that for permanent public parking. And I see that as a realistic possibility within the next twelve to eighteen months, uh, but it's slow.
And the meeting that we had with AT&T discussed the possibility of purchasing the lot, us renovating it and leasing it back to them on the off chance that they would need it for, um, basically office use. That big switching station right now doesn't serve as a switching station anymore, but they're not willing to park with the building. Because of the future possibility they may need office space, which would of course require renovation, whatever, but if that were to happen, they would need some sort of parking to allow for it. Um, we could lease that back to them, so that lease payment would go towards the renovation of the parking lot. So of course we'd have the initial purchase and renovation of it, but then the lease payments are going to pay for that back, so we're going to still explore that one, so.
Gotcha, thanks. Um, one other small suggestion is for these speakers or these microphones, could we get a speaker system? It seems like it comes up a lot that people can't hear. Uh, and we do have the mics, but no, when we did the, um, um, the League of Women's Voters session, there was a speaker and it made a big difference, so just a small budget item to maybe consider. Uh, but that's all.
To piggyback on that, can we get a bigger room too? Now, on behalf of the, one of the members, St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, thank you, East Dundee, Phil, Public Works, and Chief and everyone that was there, you guys just knocked it out of the park. We're so grateful for all your help this year, so thank you.
No report.
Scott?
No report.
Erica?
No report.
No report. Kathleen?
Yeah, um, so walked in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, it was pretty well attended, I think, considering how cold it was.
Not ten degrees though.
No, no, it wasn't like as cold as the previous year. Um, so I'm looking forward to the fireworks that were canceled this last Saturday and they'll be this coming Saturday, the twenty fifth. Um, I did receive a call on Friday from Lael and Kai Miller and they are going to be, um, closing their store. Um, so there's going to be big sales happening. Um, it's just, they've been a part of the downtown area and for seven years, it's been very successful, but it's just a ton of work to run a store full time and then, um, also find all of the, the, and do the picking that you need to do to have the inventory, the constant inventory going back and forth. So they're going out on top, um, and we'll be missing them, um, and the presents they bring to the downtown area, and that's all I had.
Sir?
Early voting started. That's all I got.
No report, thank you.
Chief?
Just, uh, at your place is our annual report, that'll be enjoyed, if you have any questions or anything, please, uh, know. And it's posted on the website. And, uh, our stationary speed signs are active now.
Joe? Yes?
No report.
Phil?
No report.
Friends, I don't think you got anything. Mine is, uh, just to reiterate the St. Patty's Day Parade, I appreciated everybody's effort and it was really well-run. It's cold, but it, it worked out really great, everybody seemed to have a really good time, so, um, I also appreciate everybody's patience tonight, a long meeting, so, um. The next one then, I guess, will be, uh, scheduled is April seventeenth unless we decide to have a special meeting that we need to call, so we need to stay on top of that one, so. Uh, okay, so are we going into executive session?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
We're all holding our breath. Oh shoot, you got to give this a jump.